I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting today.
This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everybody, to the Lander County Commission Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners. Meetings also available via teleconference at the Austin Courthouse, and we have a go-to-meeting link. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commission Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241-0153-B2. I'll call the meeting to the, uh, to order, and Mike, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15:00 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner Reports. Let me start with you, Patsy.
Thank you. We did have an Austin Advisory Meeting at the, for the airport on the 13th. We had everything actually working pretty much like it was. We discussed quite a bit about the well and such. Donnie was able to join us, and Rick Harden from the Roden Bridge. The only thing that's really coming before the Commissioners, outside of the budget, of course, will be our new regulations, and we did do those regarding leased land that some of the, uh, the buildings are on right now. That was it. Thank you.
I did attend the convention and tourism meeting. It was just standardized. They were getting ready to propose their budgets and things like that. And I did the, also, the TV board. There's not a lot they can do right now until they can get up there, because there's too much snow. So, uh, I did attend those two meetings.
Thank you. Jar?
I went to the, went to the Water Board Meeting and went amicably last Friday. And most of what I got out of that was different companies trying to convert water from one basin to the next, and how much trouble they were going to have trying to get that done. And I think they're going to protest anything that comes close to that.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mike?
I attended the Hospital Board, and that presentation will be presented today.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I have no public, or no report. We'll move into Staff Reports.
Good morning, Commission. For Austin, I'd like to report that we do have some communication coming back on the Austin Community Center. The, the youth center down there, that some of that funding that we've been given is flexible, as long as we can use it within the, the bill that we've, that we've put in, the capital funding project. And so, we're hoping to maybe move that project to a different location, and we'll, we'll be back to you guys with, with that for approval. And then, we do have a bill that's mainly in, in place because of, of some of the action that's happening in Lander County. And that's AB 102, and that's killing coyotes, the coyote calling contest. So I'm not sure if this, if this commission's interested. Maybe at the end of the meeting, you guys can give direction if any is needed at all. But I know that the reason that that bill is in is because we do have some local coyote calling contests, and they're trying to shut down all, all them contests. So, Lander County was mentioned in that on the, on the phone call we had with NACO on Friday, saying that that's why that bill is mainly in place. And then, if the community, I'm sure, has already heard that Dr. Will Court will be leaving the clinic. Not on, not on bad terms. He just got some other things that he needs to get taken care of, and we're still operating as normal. But we're just looking for a new provider at this time. So, I believe there'll be another robo-call going out with the, with that in there, so everybody knows that the clinic's still open. But it is just for, uh, the time being, looking for a new provider. And then, what's that?
Is he already left?
No. Nope. Um, and then, let me see. The last thing is, I had a couple of phone calls after our last commission meeting on library censorship. I believe Commissioner Sparks had asked what we're going to allow in our library. And I just want to be clear to the community that the censorship that I believe that Mr. Sparks is speaking to, or the conversation that I had with him, is related more to sexual content and things like that that would be inappropriate for a kid to walk into a library and get ahold of. I don't believe that this board or anybody here believes that, uh, you know, we don't have the freedom of speech or to research anything, and that's a, that's a pretty dangerous road. So I, I want to make sure that I clarify that for the community, that it's, if this is based on sexual things that we wouldn't want our children to walk into a public library and get their hands on. Outside of that, everything else we have is on the agenda.
Thank you. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Do we have any public comment? Okay. We'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action, without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of February 23rd, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of January 12th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of January 26th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of February 9th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And number five, approval of pay change, payroll change requests.
I'll make a motion that we approve, number one, the Agenda Notice. Number two, the minutes for January 12th. And number five, the payroll change request. I did not receive the minutes for January 26th or February 9th.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Patsy made the motion. Kathy seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, we'll move into item one. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove payment of bills. We'll need to poll check 218-770, 218-686, and 218-684. And do you have a motion to approve the remainder?
No move.
Second.
Second. Kathy made the motion. Patsy seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. So I'll make a motion that we approve check number 218-684. That's for Patsy.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I abstain. That is, uh, travel expenses. Thank you. I'll make a motion. We approve check number 218-770 and 218-686.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I abstain. They're made to my employer. Pointless. We'll move into item two. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove Exhibit K to join the Walmart settlement for $32,231,037.14 and to authorize the county manager to sign. So is this kind of part of the opioid crisis? Is this what this is all about?
From what I was able to discern from my review, yes. But I believe we've actually had, this has been handled, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, but this has been handled in part by other counsel, correct? That is, you had, you agreed to a settlement, part of the settlement before?
No, I believe that was an opioid settlement.
This is a different, yeah.
So this is a, this is a new one, but similar to the opioid settlement that we agreed to in the past.
Just as a clarification, too, um, the amount that you actually gave us that was separated by counties and cities that were getting their portion, the cents is off on that for what we have on our agenda. Because the agenda is supposed to be the whole total amount, and we're just off a few pennies. That's all.
Yeah, so the agenda is for 14 cents, and the printout we got says 17 cents.
Right. And our, um, our county one shows for gross allocation, $65,636.71 and also for the net. So, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we approve the exhibit to join the Walmart settlement for the $32,231,037 and corrected to 17 cents, and authorize the county manager to sign.
Okay. Patsy made the motion. Kathy seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll move into item three. Update from Holly Gatzke with University of Reno, Nevada Cooperative Extension on the hiring process for the Cooperative Extension Director position in Lander County. Is Holly here?
We did reach out to Holly and, uh, and never got back, so maybe we can table this to the next one.
Okay. We'll table item three. Move into item four. Update from Jason Bleak with the Battle Mountain General Hospital. Jason?
Good morning. Uh, let me get this little PowerPoint. That's not it.
Sorry.
See my PowerPoint up here and mark all where it is. All right. Well, we'll go ahead and get started, and once that gets up, I can shift gears and get over there. Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Blake, for the record. I'm the Administrator and CEO at Battle Mountain General Hospital, and I've got Michael Harris with me. He's the EMS Director out here at the hospital. And, um, so we're coming today with a, a simple request that we be allowed to work together to come up with a new contract for our EMS management.
Excuse me, may I just clarify that?
Yes.
Because we are on number four, and that is an update for the hospital. And number five is the EMS. If we want to open that, we can.
Yeah. Should we just open it? So let me, you know, so we've opened item four. Let us open, uh, item five as well. This is just for discussion of possible action to give county manager direction and outline desired terms for a new EMS contract.
Okay, go for it.
Sorry. Okay. And so, my desire, and I'll state it again at the very end, is that permission is given and direction given to the county manager, Mr. Ramos, to work with me to come up with a good contract that allows the hospital to continue providing the operational management of EMS. It doesn't look like it's working. Okay.
I can barely hear him in Austin.
I'll try to speak louder. Just a little bit of background on, on the contract. The contract actually expired July of 2021. We've been functioning on a month-to-month extension since that time. And since that time, we have continued providing all the services. The county has continued to, uh, to provide the subsidies as outlined in that contract. But the EMS contract, and this began back in 2012 with a feasibility study. And then, the contract was awarded to Lander County Hospital District to provide the service. The service then became a 24/7 employed service. Shortly after that, at some point, before I got here, it was, it was upgraded to a paramedic service to expand the care and the scope of care that was, that was allowed. Lander County has always, since the beginning, subsidized the operations of the EMS at varying levels. It started at around $25,000 a month, and it kind of whittled down. When I got here, it was at $7,250 a month, but then it bumped. We bumped it back up to $10,000 a month, which is where it is now. And so, it's always been, there's been a partnership in the financial subsidies. Lander County, well, and despite those subsidies, BMGH has not had a single profit, a single profitable year out of the 10 years that we've been managing the, uh, the operations of EMS. Lander County, in this, in this contract, provides and maintains the ambulances and the, the big medical equipment that are on the ambulances, and they've done a great job. We've got good equipment. We've got good ambulances. On the other side, Battle Mountain General Hospital has provided all operational aspects of EMS, including employees, the station and barracks, training, medical direction, malpractice and liability insurances, supply chain management, quality assurance programs, pharmacy assistance, policy and procedure management, HR. And in my opinion, the most important part of that is we have a team environment that covers the continuum of care, from home through the care process, hopefully back to home. And they're part of that team that provides that continuum. Oh, I forgot it. Perfect. Thank you. And so I'm just kind of going through the bullet points. I'm there at the last one on this page. The EMS relationship with the hospital has been great for the residents. We have been there when they needed us. It's been a successful 10 years of operations to care for the, the folks in this, in this county. Maybe one thing, one point of clarification on that, just that popped in my head. The employees down south in the Austin area are managed by the county here. They follow our protocols. They receive supplies through our supply chain management. They're on our insurances for malpractice and liability, but the HR side of it is managed here at, at the county level. And so, just for clarification. The next slide goes through some, some run volumes. Mike was able to provide this to me, and I appreciate his assistance with this. Back in 2011, he was able to find that there were 291 runs or, or calls to service. Now we jump forward to 2019, in the last four years. In 2019, we had 969 calls to service, over three times the amount that were in 2011. In 2020, 889. 2021, 1,248. And then, this last year, 992. So we broke down 2022 a little bit more in detail, just to show some of the, the areas where these transfers and the help was going. So, transport to BMGH, there were 293. Ground, and that IFT is inter-facility transfer. I just didn't want to write that whole thing out. It would have gone off the page. So, inter-facility transfers by, by ground were 47. Flight transfers, 96. And then, non-transfer is 556. Now, kind, the definition of non-transfer is pretty big. It's all the services that we do for people, for entities around the community and around the county that doesn't create a billable service or that doesn't get reimbursed. And so, uh, when we go standby with the sheriff's office or when we go to a home and they refuse treatment, or when we go and stand post at a football game or at the, uh, uh, racetrack, those things are counted in this 556. And there's a whole bunch of other things Mike could give.
Yeah, so, uh, basically, that is, um, anytime that we went somewhere but did not transport a patient, that's what that, um, so, fire standbys, standbys with the sheriff's office, football games, any kind of PR. Anytime we're out in the community, we consider that a call to service, but, uh, that's not reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. The next little section there is, we broke it down according to the base. So we've got the Austin base, the Kingston base, and then Battle Mountain. And these numbers come from patient charts. So the patient chart actually has to be, begun for us to get these statistics. And so in Austin, there were 39. Kingston, there were 28. And Battle Mountain, there were 697. Of these runs, of, of these total runs in 2022, there were 444 that were billable. So that averages out 1.2 billable runs per day. And so, um, though we have a lot of runs, and we get called, and we're, we're doing a lot of things, the actual billable portion is relatively small compared to what's going on. I think that it shows great, um, community involvement and community benefit through these runs. The next slide shows three years of, uh, on the left side shows three years of financial history. And I just broke it down pretty basically. The top portion are revenues, bottom portion are expenses. Then, down in the yellow, um, are the losses for the last three years. So, and it does show the county subsidy, $120,000 per year for the last three years. But despite those, those subsidies and our good efforts to bill as much as we could, we still show losses for the services for those three years. Three years totaling $276,334.65. Just as a, kind of a, a visual and a display of, of the monthly activity, I broke down fiscal year 2022 into months. And you can see there, uh, three out of the 12 months showed a positive bottom line for, for the EMS specifically. August and September, I, I trust that one. April, I think, is an outlier. It's outlier for one important reason. As you noticed, the, the losses from December, January, February, March are a little bit higher than normal. We recognize that there was a billing issue, and we had to change some billing processes and practices. And so, once we got into April and we caught up on all the billing, that's where it shows that very large gain. And so, I would actually exclude that as an outlier, because that's not a normal operation, or not, not a normal operating month. Okay. Final slide that I have is, uh, and these are my perspectives and, and the hospital's perspectives and our desire. Our perspective is that the residents of Lander County have received higher-quality care through the management relationship with BMGH. I think that that relationship is synergistic, meaning that our com, our combined efforts as one entity is a greater benefit to the county than if we were siloed and working separately. Through the hospital, there are better reimbursement opportunities through BMGH as a critical access hospital, specifically with Medicare. BMGH desires a new contract allowing us to continue to serve Lander County with EMS services. Despite the losses, we still want to do this. We feel that the benefit to the community, the way that it's working, the benefits to all patients, even hospital patients, outweighs the losses that we have, we have seen and realized. But this contract going forward needs to be based on cooperation, trust, and autonomy. And BN, and so in closing, BMGH respectfully requests the authority and direction be given to county manager to open discussions and negotiations for a new long-term EMS management contract. Just to recognize some of the folks that are here, they have the back row monopolized, is a, is a big team of EMS employees. Some paramedics, some AEMTs, um, but they have really put in a lot of great effort, north and south, to take care of this county when the need is the greatest. We've had some interesting scenarios lately, and this EMS team, under the direction of Mike, has, has functioned very, very well. I also want to recognize Marla Sam and Lyell Farr from the Hospital Board. They have come out to, uh, to offer support here. And also, I've got Hope is our Director of Nurses. Jody works in the, um, the Business Service Department. And I've got Dr. Paul Herman, who is our Medical Director, that is also the Medical Director over EMS and the Emergency Department. And so, that very fact is that he can, he can pull all services together under one direction, and it flows very well. But that is my little presentation. I appreciate the time. Mike, do you have anything to add?
You guys have any questions for me?
Well, I'll open it up for discussion. Commissioners, any questions or concerns?
I will speak on the fact that I've been here going on 17 years now. When I first came, it wasn't a very good service, and I, I had the, the Football League. I participated in some of the high school assistant coaches. I had the Football League basically solely for 16, uh, 15, well, 16 years I had it. And the services that were provided on the last four and a half years of, of what I provided, it climbed. So, like I said, I, I supported, I, I'm negotiating, asking something as we, uh, to where it is now. Thought about it beyond what I thought it could have done or would have expected it to do. So, who knows? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I know, as far as our history, let's see. I've been in Southern Lander County for a little over 30 years now, and ours was strictly all volunteer. Not sure how Battle Mountain did it back then. They had some different, different situation. Because our medical director was out of Fallon. So we ran directly Fallon, and if we had to meet Battle Mountain, they would meet us. We still had the cooperation. But we were strictly all volunteer. And when I became a Commissioner, I was really, really hell-bent on trying to get some, some permanent people down there, not just volunteer, although we're still volunteer-based. But it was so important that we had the coverage, because Highway 50 and, and Highway 80 are both the two big, you know, east-west, and we've got to have them covered well, let alone the medical. But, but the accidents, we need to be there on top of. So, um, I'm, I'm thrilled the way it's turned out. When we first talked to the hospital, we wanted the hospital to just run everything. And of course, that, the hospital said absolutely no way, no how. I think it was on the board then. And we said, no, we can't do this. I mean, the loss to us financially would be way too much. So we started working with the county on it, and like you said, we changed over the amount of subsidy that we give you. But the whole idea was to subsidize the hospital till we can make it pay for itself, and you would take over totally. I don't believe that's ever going to be possible for a long, long time unless our county becomes very, very, much more highly populated, for sure. So with that, um, I, I approve of, uh, certainly our, our county manager working with you on what you think you need as a subsidy and where we are, because I think we're at a real important part. I think it's an excellent service. We need to do it. Safety is one of our, our big things that we're responsible for as Commissioners. And, and, and a lot of them are local, a lot of them are not, but we need to be there for people. And, and I think it's all worked out rather well. I was anxious to hear the update and see what our losses actually were. But I do know that billing has been a big problem for years, because when people have an But I do know that billing has been a big problem for years, because when people have an automobile accident, usually they at least have um that type of medical coverage on their car, not always, but most of them do. And so we should be being paid a lot more than we were collecting for. So if you have that worked out, I think that will make a big difference, because uh um like I said, we were not billing properly when when I was running, I know we weren't, and so I hope that's one out of it. And um yes, I I strongly approve of of uh certainly the negotiations between you and bringing it back before our commissioners so that we can we can tackle this and see where we can go to grow and and still limit some of our our costs out there and and provide excellent service. So my question to you, Mike, is are you fully staffed with EMTs up here?
No, uh we we are down a full-time paramedic and uh will be down a full-time advanced EMT here in the next three weeks.
Okay, but you run all full-time employee people, right?
Uh so we have uh
Part-time?
Full-time and then we have per DMs that rotate in and catch shifts when they're available.
Okay, because we're still um, you know, we we have two permanent people in the south and then volunteers and so um I guess everywhere we need more volunteers and more more staff.
Yeah, I would uh commissioner, I would I would say that um volunteers are fantastic. And uh for a long time EMS ran off of volunteers, that model is largely dead, right? People are doing this as a career now.
We need that, yeah.
And they should be. You go, you know, myself personally, I have a degree, I went to school for many years to um to be a full-time paramedic and get compensated in that fashion and and people are just not doing this and they're doing it as a career. We don't have volunteer cops. You know, we don't like, the call volume itself is not indicative of being supportive from a volunteer staff anymore. It's gonna take full-time staff.
Well, it would be wonderful if we could get the advanced and the paramedics, but um I I'm still on the old school of I don't care if they're basics, as long as they pick them up, stabilize them and move them. I mean, we've got to take care of them, we've got to be there now.
Sure.
So any kind of a a a person that wants to get that kind of training, and a lot of them do go on to to uh advance that, that's for sure.
And and along those lines, we have, the hospital has educated a lot in the community um to be EMTs. And uh at one point, our clinic, we we uh educated our clinic MAs to be EMTs so that they had that, now they're all migrating over to EMS and so it's short in the clinic, but uh
We'll take them at EMS.
We continue to train and educate uh locals here so that we can fill some of those positions as they come open and so. Mike, Pessy.
Um when I started at the sheriff's department in nineteen eighty seven, it was the fire department at that time that just went and scooped them up and took them. And so it's I've got to watch the it evolve over the years. And I know that during COVID, the um the ambulance service was incredible for helping the, they really were, and to the staff in that hos- they were incredible to a lot of the people who um and I know there was those probably weren't billable, because they just went and helped take care of them, took their oxygen and stuff like that. So though I know for a fact that those were not billable hours. And I know from being a patient that the ambulance service helps in the ER when they are full. They're in there helping alongside the doctors and the nurses. Um so a couple of my questions are for the um mentally ill, the transportation of the mentally ill now. So if I'm remembering right, how are you guys changing that from the way it is now? Or is that the boiler point plate that it was before? Because I noticed in there for the transportation for the mentally ill, um how is that di- gonna be any different from what? Because I know the sheriff's department used to be involved in that before for safety reasons. How is that going to be any different?
So uh I think it's very situational. I think if we have a a patient that needs to go to a secured facility and they're um extremely combative or something like that, I think we could always reach out to the sheriff's office. They've been always willing to help, but largely we uh we take those in secured vehicles or really depending on the patient. Um we try not to stick them in the back of an ambulance anymore, so we will take them in one of our um quick response units. Or uh we have an old Explorer that we've uh since retired and we are running them down in um one of our one of our quick response units.
And where are you guys taking them? Are you taking them to Washoe? Because I know they had um closed that facility in Reno. Where are you taking them?
Uh yeah, so the majority of our um transfers, our site transfers go to Reno Behavioral Health. And then I think there's two more in Reno, one in Carson. Everything generally migrates out out that way. Those are hard because um that's a big need and and those fill up very fast, so there's a lot of times when they fly down to Vegas. Or they don't get to bed for seventy-two hours, then they get released back into the general public.
Um the only other, one of the other questions I have, just so I don't forget, I noticed in there that there's a thirty-day out um on the contract. My question is, there's no way if in sense that that was to happen, that we could pull ourselves together in thirty days? I know it used to be ninety days, years, I think at the beginning, and I think that that's one of my concerns in there. Because there's no way if on thirty day that the county would be able to get organized fast enough to get our ducks in a row, so I would just ask that that be something that's considered and changed to a please.
Thank you, Kathy. Any more uh commission staff have any questions?
Yeah, I have I have a few questions, so um and a few concerns, because if I understand correctly, I think Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys are you already have some sort of direction of where the hospital wants to go and and the requests you guys want to make. Is am I mistaken in that?
Uh for
As far as far
For our negotiations?
Yes.
Oh, there's there's some little things, kind of like what Kathy just brought up, that, yeah, we we would like to get ironed out a little bit. Um but I think that's something that we can work through. I'm sure you've got some things on your side that that you want to uh try to work into it or make changes. I think that's what we're asking for permission.
No, no, certainly, but I but I, since we're here and sitting in front of the commission, the the ideas that I have moving forward, I want to make sure that that we're all having the same thoughts, because the, because what I'm hearing is that we um we want to relabel the equipment, and I'm not sure if that's true or not, that you guys would like it to be Battle Mountain General Hospital labels. Not and and the that's that's small in the in the scheme of what we're looking at. Um and then that you guys might want to take in the Austin EMS, which I don't know that that I'm in favor of, but I take, like I said, I take the direction of this commission, so um.
Um um I can speak to both of those.
Okay.
Um regarding the equipment, because you have taken the stance that you wanted to maintain the equipment on the county side. My stance is is that with Medicare, we get reimbursed according to our cost. So if we can show a cost for that equipment, we get more reimbursement. If you maintain uh total control of that and we can't cost their expense it out, reimbursement stays low.
Now, you you do know that the reason we do that is because we pay for a hundred percent of the equipment, so I'm not sure if we make some sort of deal to to split that, but that's why I want to have this.
That's why I brought up before when we spoke that we can set up a lease agreement type scenario where we pay for it. You guys still maintain ownership, but we pay for it so that we can show an expense.
Gotcha.
Um so that's that side of it. And so just the throwing it out that the hospital wants our name on it, that's not the full story. I want to be able to show an expense so that we can increase our reimbursement, and that's only for Medicare. Medicaid, they do what they want. Um we we write off tons on Medicaid. But Medicare, we have the opportunity to increase our reimbursement if we show that as an expense. So we can work through that. Um what was the other Austin side? Uh this is the difficult thing on for the hospital. We we provide all these operational issues, including malpractice and liability insurance. But we don't have any control over the hu- the human resource side of Austin. And so when it comes time, if we need to uh reprimand somebody for not following protocols or if heck breaks loose, if something goes really wrong, our liability insurance is on the hook for s- for an employee that we don't have control over. And so we just need to work that out. Either they can become part of us or we need to find some liability and malpractice that the uh that the county can pick up to cover your employees.
So it's a matter of insurance, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Um and then and then my thoughts on this, and this is where I think that that me and you in previous conversations has kind of had some some differences, is I thought that or I feel that we should do a fifty-fifty split on the loss, um in- including the purchase of equipment and everything else. Because the county's taken a hundred percent of the the purchase and then the hospital, the only time that they reimburse is after um all all debts are paid, more or less. Um so I so I have a concern with that. I just feel like, you know.
So a question on this, on this financial snapshot that you provided this, Jason. So the county subsidizes a hundred twenty thousand dollars annually. So is are there other experiences that we incur as a county?
Yeah, so we buy all the ambulances.
See, that's what I'd be interested in seeing as as a, I like a complete financial aspect of like what what is what is it complete right now? What is Lander County's expense? What is the hospital's expense? I, as a commissioner, I'd like to see that.
Jason, can you talk louder? They can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, and I'll lean forward.
Um and then what else do we have?
Kind of along, before you jump on, along those same lines, I don't think I've ever said that I'm against splitting things differently or anything. We haven't even got to that point yet. Um but I also want to make sure that we're including the sweat equity that's going into it, because there's a lot of work that goes into all of this. Providing money in an ambulance is relatively easy. It's it's money. Here's here you go, we're gonna pay for this. Managing employees, Mike, Mike's got his hands full on a daily basis. And and we need to recognize that this isn't just a dollars and cents type scenario. There's there's work that's being done. There's there's a sweat equity that's being put into this, and so I hope that we can make sure we remember that through all of this as well.
Certainly. Um my my last concern and something that that I would hope the commission um is for is is I have concerns when I when I look at the pay of our of our paramedics, maybe we incorporate something like that into into the contract. Um because if you look at the surrounding communities, when I pulled them up, um their paramedics are anywhere from twenty-two to thirty-three dollars an hour and um and have pretty good insurance packages. And then when you look at look at ours, we're fifteen to twenty-two and and, you know, nowadays you can go to McDonald's and and flip burgers and make seventeen bucks an hour. Um so I would like to uh to at least have some sort of direction to put something in there to better take care of the paramedics where we can retain some of these people, because I feel that if you don't, they can go to up and down the freeway here and make more money and and we are a revolving door to get people in and get them experience and and then ricochet, but I may be speaking out of turn, maybe Mikey wants to 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 talk to that or or Jason, but if that's something that um this commission would direct, I I think that it would be good to incorporate into the contract, maybe taking care of some of the, you know, if we got to up the you the amount that we pay to the hospital, if that's the direction that we go, um but I think that it is, it's critical in the future.
Definitely, we can talk about it. Um in a management contract like this, I hope that operations will be turned over so that we don't have a bifurcating uh scenario where we have to bounce back and forth between two entities. So I hope whatever agreement we come to, operationally, it will be turned over to the hospital and we'll manage it. Um I feel, and this is my my opinion, but I've got ten years of of history to back it up. I feel that we have been competitive and sustainable. Um sometimes you can say competitive and then you go unsustainable. Um every industry in the state or in the country right now is is experiencing these crazy inflation of human resources. Some of them, you've already recognized, they're starting to come back down to normal or to a different level. Uh healthcare is the same way. Nurses fly up and then they come back down. Paramedics fly up and then hopefully they come back down. Um I feel that we have managed it for ten years in in a competitive but also sustainable manner. Um to be competitive was one thing, but can we sustain it? I have to go back to that one point two billable runs per day uh and say, okay, if this is a Medicaid run, if that one point two or Medicaid, it's a fee schedule. We might bill five thousand dollars. We're gonna get two hundred seventeen, period. We can't even argue against that. Uh and so trying to balance competitiveness with sustainability is where our business practices have been, and I think that we've done pretty good to this point. If we need to make some adjustments, we'll make some adjustments, but uh.
Well, I I only say that because we have lifeguards that make seventeen bucks an hour here. And and if I were to look at things of from the county side of of what's important, you know, our our police officers, our EMS and you'd go down that list of when when they're needed, they're the most important that you have and and to maintain them people. Um if it's if it's a few dollars and we can do that through through a contract and this this commission can, you know, kind of give that direction, I would like to if if possible. I understand the the feasibility side and and that, but I also think that in certain things in public service, um there's built-in losses. I mean, you're you're never gonna make money in your your parks, your pools, your um rec centers, golf courses. You them are sheriff's department, they're they're losing losing battles. I believe EMS is as well um to some degree. Granted, you guys do have some some billing that you can do, but um them are really important people that I think should probably be taken good little better care of considering. And I say that with as much respect as possible. I don't mean that to any of you guys.
I'm confident that uh if given the opportunity, we'll be able to work out a good scenario. Okay. Um yes, public comment or questions?
Yes, good morning.
Come to the front, yeah, please state your name for the record. Do you want me up here anymore or you want me to sit down? Yeah, you're you're okay. Okay.
Good morning, uh ladies and gentlemen of the board and uh community members. Uh this is great to see. First of all, um the two entities working together. Um Bennett, my name is Matt Hi.
Thank you, Matt.
Been a citizen here in Lander County for sixteen years now. Uh there have been changes and, you know, kind of here and outside of, you know, the circles. You know, people that come into the community, you know, there are concerns about, you know, are the EMS able to get out to the other things, and they are really strapped. You know, and I mean, the concern that you have, Mr. Ramos. For the people that are firsthand and first seen what's going on in their community, because they are the front line. You know, as well as the sheriff's department and everybody, so, you know, I mean, if there is funding to work and better the system as well as for the community, you know, you know, there is federal funding as well, you know, to really evaluate what's going on. Because, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, you know, as well as our nation, you know, Battle Mountain is north central Nevada, and that is very crucial, you know, to what you guys have going on in this community, so. Um you know, really, uh look at the changes that have gone on going on and um what we do see with what's happening in the youth is we do see lack of volunteership. And that is sad. I mean, you you've probably seen it, like you had said, mentioned, ma'am, from Fallon. Um you know, there's a lot of different things that going on in that in the leadership role. And I do appreciate the board members and the people in the community to really evaluate, you know, the funding that is needed for your care in this this county, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Kim?
Sorry. Kim Shaw, Lander County EMS. So I just wanted to clarify a couple things really fast. Um it it looks really bad on us when the numbers reflect that um Austin ran thirty-nine calls that is incorrect. So some of the factors that come into play with that is how many were received to Battle Mountain General Hospital? And I know that in the past, when I was able to have access to um figure out how many calls we have run, we have always ran at least an average of a hundred calls a year, and that's kind of what we've been on, a hundred calls a year, is what we've go off of. However, we fly a lot of our patients and we do that so we can save lives. I mean, at some points, there are not crews available that can come re- come meet us to get a higher level of care. Or if I call for medical direction, they advise we ship them somewhere else, because Battle Mountain General Hospital is not always a place for the people that get in trouble in Austin. We're a long way from anywhere, and one of our protocols is um the criteria Um the criteria for flying a patient is distance itself. I mean, distance. You know, two hours in an ambulance is a long time for not having that higher level of care and getting things taken care of. So I along with that, I would say that um we went by the charting aspect of that. That one of many directors that we've had had directed us not to do charts on all of our calls. So which is what we used to do. If we're canceled in route, if um. We get on there and they sign a straight refusal, there's nothing wrong with them. That doesn't mean we are going out thirty-nine times. We are out. All of the time, but it's not reflecting on the data and the data is a pretty important um aspect of what we do. Especially in the rural areas. I mean, we are running our tails off. It may not be making money and I understand that. It's a losing battle. I I get that, but um I just wanna let you know that we do run a lot more than thirty-nine calls. I do agree with the ninety day out. I mean, thirty days is if something happens, that's a um. That's not enough time to get things done, you know, and to get in line. Um all these people in the back here, they wear the same patch I do. And it's not a matter of name, Battle Mountain General Hospital. We work not for Lander County like as ju- for Bert. We work for the citizens of Lander County and we, that is my family back there and we run like that, no matter who is in control of us. We save lives together and that's all I have to say.
Kim, let me just clarify something. So if you pick somebody up in an accident and um you don't transport, the the helicopter comes. There's nothing that's billable there.
Nothing's billable there um because they will take control. If we have to get there and stabilize and so. People should understand that um I understand everybody's short on both end, you know, the parent, the crew here is short. Not you can't always get down there. Um what, when I call for a backup from Battle Mountain, it is imperative. They have backup from Battle Mountain, Eureka or Fallon or wherever because what people don't understand is oftentimes I am by myself. Or I'm just with my fire chief and we've gotta go out an hour and we've gotta go cut somebody out of a vehicle and then we've gotta stabilize them before we can even get on the road. And go anywhere. So when I call somebody to Austin. I mean, I really need them in Austin so that I can turn over patient care to them for number one, I'm spent. I'm not gonna. Provide the care that they need because I am so worn out from doing my job. Of extricating or whatever.
Okay, no, I I understand that, but I'm saying all all the services that you gave, if the helicopter comes and picks him up. You said there's nothing that's billable.
That from my understanding, I don't do billing. I do I don't do the billing. That's on the hospital side.
Put them in the ambulance and took them to the airport and picked up a fixed wing, then that would be billable.
Well, for I'm not really a hundred percent clear on that because um I have heard no because I have heard that the patient. Or the service that delivers them to the hospital is the one that collects. Now, I don't know for a hundred percent sure. I don't do I don't do billing. I do patient care.
Yeah, we we definitely need to see what we're missing here on this because I mean, you're almost like making um a home visit. I mean. Uh when a doctor, years ago, the doctors used to come and and take care of you at home, but they got paid, you know, their chicken or pig or whatever they got paid for. That was a home visit. So if we're out there and we're in the scene, even though we call for backup or whatever, why? That still should be something.
I I I agree one hundred percent. That that just is not, that's above my pay grade. I I do EMS. I. I work with my patient. I don't do the billing. However, what I was talking about when we weren't charting. To to reflect that um those were the calls we went on. If deputy calls us out because um. It has a potential to be catastrophic, we get on scene, there is nothing wrong with anybody. They straight up do not want any services or whatever, you know. We might, hey, are you okay? You still got a pulse? Um whatever, that is not billable and we were directed not to do charts on those.
I understand that part.
Okay.
Because that's that's a non-transport.
Yes.
And you're looking at us if they're shocked or they're gonna treat anyway.
Yes.
Um but the ones that you do and you do, you you, like you said, the fire department, you know, and you cut them out of their vehicle.
Yes.
Get them all stabilized and 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 on our.
I agree one hundred percent that you should be compensated for that, but that is something that's beyond my control. I don't I don't have control of that and I don't even know how that works. You know, um to be honest with you, I'm not on that side of it.
So i- it's my understanding and again, I'm not super savvy in the billing aspect, but I I think I know a little bit. Um you get a base, a base uh a base amount depending on the insurance. Um so you can bill whatever you want, but insurance is only gonna pay a certain amount. So we have a base amount for. When we get called out, if it's a transportable or you do care, but yeah, so if we have a accident. Where Kim spends three hours extricating and then the flight crew drops right next to her, she's getting zero loaded mileage and that is what. That's what pays the bills. That's why interfacility transfers are so important, cuz you have all of those loaded mileage. Without that, you're gonna get the. Two hundred, one hundred dollar reimbursement.
However, we don't have that option out there. To save a life, we have to get that helicopter. We're losing that money. Bottom line, if we're gonna save a life, we're we're eating that and um. I tried initially, the first few years I was here, they're like, it's billable for this. It's billable. You have to do this. You have to do this. You have to do this. I can't think like that. I've gotta think for my patient and I've gotta do the very best thing for my patient and it's not always great because we get them screaming at us. When they get a flight bill, now Granite Lander County pays for, you know, they have a contract with whatever, but that's not always. The flight that shows up because they're not always available, but bottom line is. Is if I'm gonna save somebody's life, they gotta get out of here now. I don't have an hour for somebody to show up or two hours or whatever it is, you know, I mean, I just don't have that option. And that's what we're here to do is save lives.
Any other public uh comment or questions?
Yes.
Please come to the front, state your name.
My name's Jeff Scott and I'm an advanced DMT with Lander County. BMGH or however we divvy it up. Um. This is not my bailiwick. My I could do pretty well on scene handling the chaos there, but. This sort of stuff, not my strong suit. Uh some of what you've heard is true and some of it isn't. Uh the billable hours issue that's being put up there and the April outlier issue, the reason why there's an outlier in April. Is because our former EMS director, Sean Burke, had to go and get a private billing company to bill our calls. And that's why we started making money is because this private company, which still handles our our calls and they would be available to explain any, you know. Insurance billing stuff for you, started billing for that and then they started billing for some of the ones that were missed in the months that. The hospital's billing department didn't bill. The the current system where the ambulance crew. Is across the street at the station and gets to work in the ER um is great and and you know, it it. Works great for the community because we can go in there and we can supplement their staff. Um we did it yesterday. There was a. Critical patient that might have need to be intubated and we were able to go in there and, you know, be there ready to drop a tube. Into a patient to save their life uh if that was necessary. That happened all throughout COVID. There is only one nurse that has recently uh joined the, or rejoined the the hospital that can intubate. So it goes from the doctor. To that nurse if she's available, but most of the time what has happened during COVID is it goes from the doctor to the paramedic. And if not the paramedic, then the advanced DMT because I can drop an eye gel instead of an actual endotracheal tube. And that's the next best thing. So there are certain things that we do that are very, very helpful that aren't actually represented in the billing numbers. But the main thing is is that the billing department should bill. There's a setup where, you know, Kim and and Deb are part of the county, but they can still work in the ER. That whole system needs to be preserved for the for the best service to be provided to the county. You know, folks here, uh because we really are able to do good work. Uh and. Over the last three years, the losses that have that have been posted for the hospital, uh those look significant. They really do, except when you look at the fact that one ICU nurse that could do that, you know, could drop tubes and do all the things that that are necessary. Would cost about four hundred thousand dollars, one travel nurse and we probably, we couldn't have probably filled that position, especially during COVID. So none of the hours that we spend over there as a crew, you know, saving lives and bolstering the staff of the hospital. And none of those are reflected. Those aren't those aren't billed. That's just gone. Uh and I'm not saying this is like, you know. We should use that and get a bonus or, you know, whatever. It's I'm saying that is because we provide a very valuable service that is not seen. And if we were suddenly gone, not only would they have to supplement their staff with these very expensive nurses that probably are not going to. Come here unless they're paid a lot of money, uh you know, they're just. It it would be bad for the community, you know, so that that would be that would now be a loss for them because two of those nurses, now you've got. You you know, what, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars a year or whatever it's gonna cost just to get the travel nurses in. To do the job that the paramedics and the and the advanced and basic EMTs can do when we can bolster their staff. The management uh is a huge issue there. The policies and protocols and the ability to do this stuff, I have never seen the HR department as bad. And uh as this one, um you know, there is stuff that is not signed, is not. Maybe I've I've never seen anything like it.
He's got the floor.
So so you know, you there are two, there are a couple of things you can look at here. First off, you can look at the, you know, the the actual staffs itself, the ambulance crew itself. And like that there's no sick days, you know, no vacation really taken. I mean, we worked o- overtime whenever, you know, it's necessary. There were, there was a one paid period in November where I got a hundred and twenty-seven hours of overtime in a two-week period because I was working all the time. So we have a very good crew. We provide a very good service, but we have no support. At best, we are neglected by the hospital and at worst, we are mismanaged. You can see that by looking at uh just the the director position. The director position in Elko was a long-term position uh that that person, uh Lee Cabanas. Promoted into a county manager or emergency preparedness or something and the assistant director, who'd been there for a decade, is now in that spot. And HDH, you have Andrew Lovless has been there ten years, the assistant or fifteen years, and the assistant director's been there ten years. There's continuity. And this is uh and this has an impact on billing and the profitability too, cuz like Kim said, one of the directors. Uh that came in said, don't bill it like this. Lander County has had six directors in the time that. Uh that Battle Mountain General Hospital has run it. Um and these folks uh have, that that's an average of about two years. Uh you know, they're, these are good people that have been either run off or fired. Some of them are locals that, you know, have gotten completely out of EMS cuz they got burned out by it. Uh it's very difficult to attract folks to work here when you have. Directors that are like spinal tap drummers that only last a certain amount of time before they're gone and there's no continuity, no security, no. I I don't know, it it no stability. Uh and yet we still do the job that we do. You know, uh you've got the system in place, like I said, with the with the south county where they can work in the hospital, so there's no reason why. The county couldn't take over the management of the, you know, of the the ambulance itself, keep us over there. We still wouldn't build the hospital to do the stuff. We could still help the community just like we always do and, you know, provide that level of service. But we wouldn't have the issues that we have with uh with Battle Mountain upper management and the human resources and those kind of issues. And I'm saying this to you as someone who was written up by Jason, uh given a verbal warning that's in my file because I was going to report some of these things. To you and the board and uh I was threatened with all kinds of good stuff and so this is the first opportunity I've had. And this morning I turned in my two-week notice. So that's all I got for you guys. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Welcome.
Uh Marla, come to the front and state your name.
Marla Sam for the record. That was uncalled for because that is a personnel issue. That should never have been discussed in public. If you have a problem like that, it's never come to the board. Nobody's ever approached anybody about a problem. We come to a commissioner's meeting to air something that's his opinion, that does not know what goes on behind closed doors. With the HR person or the billing or because you're upset and you're gonna quit. That is not a fair thing and that is a terrible thing. And our HR person does just fine. She's very fair and she is very good at her job. And so is Jason. And if you have a problem like this, why is it to a commissioner's meeting instead of to a board meeting? Or why is it even here? This has nothing to do with the EMS contract. This is a bitch session about your boss and I disagree with it. I think it's terrible and on the record. I don't believe it. I'm sorry. We do a good job at that hospital. Our employees are very good. Jason is very good. We didn't come from being in the hole. To where we are right now because we have bad management. And I see what goes on behind the scenes over there. You do not. What you see in a, I mean, we all know in a job how we are and I think that is a very unfair thing to have had happen. An unvery fair thing to have said and to say something about our HR person. She's not here to defend herself. That is not correct.
Thank you, Marla. I'd just like to state that when people come to speak to us, it's their opinion, it's their comment. We're not here to censor it. Um that's what it's, that's what a public forum's all about. So I just, I understand what you're saying, but it's, that's his right, just as you have a right, so.
Thank you. Amy Nelson, um I just have a perspective. I've heard a few times today, some of the EMS come up and apologize. Or feel like they, you know, we're not making a profit or we're not breaking even. And I just wanna reiterate what Bert said. It's important. In government and even in business to understand that not all departments make a profit, especially sometimes when you're providing a service. Last week, I almost burned a house down. Ron came and the ambulance crew came because, you know, there's a lot of smoke in the house. And I appreciate it. They didn't get to bill, but that service was so soothing to me because I was pretty shaken up. Um anyone wants to hear about it later, it's a pretty good story. But I I go always back to the school district. There are several departments, typically the lunch department, special ed, small rural schools, transportation. They're not expected to make a profit or even break even. Because they're providing the service, bringing the student to the school where then DSA kicks in. And I feel like that's the same for our community with EMS. They get the the patient soothed and to the hospital and then there's billable opportunities once you get them into the hospital and that's where they. Make up the difference. Um so I just wanted to make sure that we are really careful because we found this in the school district. Sometimes they felt bad or felt shamed or felt like they weren't doing their part because it's like, dang, you know, we're ninety-two thousand dollars a year. That's what the average is that we're, you know, we're having to take from somewhere else to to support EMS and we have to shift that thinking. Just like we do with county services. Some of them are there for the service, not to break even. But anyway, I wanted to say I appreciate you guys, especially last week. Thank you, Ron and.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty crazy.
I would like to say too, I would just, it is, it's first responders, it's public servants. I mean, Ron, I'm sure you're making a profit at your sheriff's department, but. I mean, I'd like to take this time to, all the first responders we do have in the room is thank you for what you do do. Uh it is a tough job. Could I be able to answer some of the things that she brought up?
If you have a comment, you can comment.
Thank you, just unbriefly. What, a lot of what she said was very passionate as well, but untrue.
I've been planning on moving back to California, but I was gonna do it in the summertime. I'm getting married, so uh that's how that's working. It's not a. You know, this is a bitch session or anything like this. Uh I was written up because I wanted to go to the board to talk to them. I was told not to, that I could be have more progressive discipline and possibly be terminated. So there is a, you know, there's a reason why you guys don't hear this stuff and the things that I mentioned about the HR department. Are backed by evidence. Uh there's things that I talk about, you know, when I'm saying that I was written up by Jason with a verbal warning. Is backed by evidence. Uh this job is a great job that I have commuted to. Almost six hours uh each way uh from California to work and I came here specifically, I left a mining job. Uh that paid quite a bit and I came here specifically to work for this community and this service.
and I came here specifically to work for this community and this service because it is so good. I, when I turned in my notice, I turned in my notice and I requested it to be put on per diem because I will still travel back here to work for this service. For this community, to work with the sheriffs that I know and the, and the people that I know. When I say I got another job, one of the reasons I bring that up is because it was so easy to do. I, I mean, I am, I have HR people that are texting me and calling me on the phone and not only in California, but in Reno, trying to get me to come work for them. They, they have, you know, sign-on bonuses of twenty thousand dollars for paramedics. We can't afford to lose folks here because of mismanagement and neglect. Because there are too many other opportunities out there. And there are too many times that I've seen where we've been in the ER, we've, you know, or on scene and we've been able to save lives just because we have a competent crew that's a dedicated team. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a quick clarification on that, we're discussing, um, like I said, I don't think we're ever in anybody's mind that somebody's gonna break even. But if we have some billing issues, which we have had for some time, and we can straighten those out, what we should be collecting is only due to us, then yes. I don't expect EMS people out there to go, oh, well, I could do this and bill this. No, that's not what we expect you to even think about. But if there is something that we can collect on, I think that's only prudent that we do so, that's all. Thank yous to our EMS, and you wanted for a motion?
I know, I have something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
For one, EMS, like law enforcement, is an unmandated, um, law that we have to do regardless if money is made or not, it has to be there. So, anytime you put unmandated, that's the red flag that you're not going to make money at it, period. So, I just want to make sure that people understand regardless, it's an unmandated, um, law that we have to follow, so.
Uh, my name's Hope Bauer, I'm the chief nursing officer at Battle Mountain General Hospital. Um, I've worked there for fifteen years plus. Um, I've worked in the emergency room as a nurse. Worked many calls when we had the volunteer service and they did what they could do. Worked lots of times when there'd be five all calls, nobody going to pick up a patient laying out on the freeway. So, I just hope that the hospital and the county can come together and work for the citizens, for the service. We work really great with our EMS, they are an asset to our team one hundred percent. Uh, despite what Mr. Scott said, we have very, very competent nurses in our ED and ER doctors in our ED. We've taken care of patients for a long time. EMS does complement us, however, we can hold our own. But we're happy to have them, um, we want to all work together for the community and I hope that you guys can work it out and come together and do the best for the citizens of Lander County. Thank you.
Charlie Vaughn from Austin. I had a question on the presentation. Um, he indicated, or you indicated a two hundred thousand plus deficit in twenty twenty-two? So, who ended up paying for that?
The, the two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar deficit, that was for three years, that's on the hospital's bottom line.
Okay, I think we need to know that, I assume that that's, goes, goes back in past, in the past as well. Because that, that should paint a, a, I think, a more clear picture for Bert and the county as they come up with, how are we gonna do this contract to make it everybody whole? Because in my book, that's a lot of money, so, um, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, I'm Karen Hall, I'm a paramedic for Lander County EMS. Been with EMS for five and a half years. Um, I've been here since twenty fifteen. I'd like to thank you all for, for speaking with us and listening to what we have to say. I would like to thank Mr. Ramos for bringing up the fact about the wages because I would like you both to respectfully consider a step ladder of the amount of education a person has as well as years of service. For example, I have a master's degree, two bachelor's degrees, UMTI canine certifications. It, an education represents a person's ability of, uh, going after a degree of putting in the time and effort, eleven-plus years to become a physician. It shows you dedication, it shows you determination, it shows you steadfastness and, uh, that you believe in hard work and it carries over into what you do in your job. And so, would you respectfully consider a step ladder like the county has with the sheriff's department of years of education, uh, and experience? Languages that you can speak, I speak three. And bonuses for these efforts that we have in addition to saving the lives of the people that we do. A lot of what we do is not just going out there, picking up a patient and loading them in. It takes a lot of thought. If I didn't have people like Jeff taking over the comms, if I had to take over the communication, my boss taking over communication for me so that I can think about what I have to do, I couldn't do it alone. We are a complete team. Please, take over for me, get the comms, get the airplane, get the second out, get the, get the crew member. Call the ER for me, I can't think, I gotta think about my patient at hand. And sometimes when we're out there on the highway, I eighty and we have five patients, one ambulance, I need my buddies, I need my second outs. I'm a teacher by trade, I've taught for thirty years and I teach EMS classes. I do that because I believe when I've got a call out there on Hilltop and it is eight minutes to get there, I need community members to know hard, fast CPR, BLS skills. Therefore, I enjoy teaching that for this community, I thoroughly enjoy it. The more people we get who can do CPR, BLS, the more people we can save. Especially when we're out here in the boonies, out in Valmy, going up to two-ten because we're helping out humble. So, I respectfully request you consider, when you were talking, because you made a valid point, Mr. Ramos, we need some kind of continuity with that and with insurance as well. Cause I can't provide insurance for my son because of the package is so high. So, if we could possibly consider this when we talk, I would be grateful. I know my people would be grateful, I know you would retain a way, way more people if you could do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. So, uh, we've heard a lot on the subject, uh, I'm ready to hear a motion or a direction. I don't know if necessarily we need a motion.
No, I think so, we need the direction to correct some, as these two to work together to correct some issues.
I think we've heard, you know, compelling arguments from both sides and I think we'll just negotiate the best thing for our citizens because really, that's what it's all about, so.
So, I think is all I'm looking for from you guys is just the direction of where you would like me to start the negotiations. If the fifty-fifty split on the losses, what's, me and Jason maybe working together on getting some of the stuff over there, some sort of rental agreement where you guys can get the, the best insurance and, um, you know, some of the best losses or however we can work that, I, I'm all for that, but I just need the direction from this commission so it doesn't.
I think that would be the direction that we need to go. Because it's like, that's one of the concerns I had is, I, I'd like to see a full financial, but if you're gonna be negotiating that, we're gonna have to see the full financial to see what the, because the bottom line is, we're not gonna make a profit, I don't believe, in something like this. Another thought I had is, I, and I don't know if we can maybe get with Porter Group or the Gallup RISR grants for us, is there money that's available to help us subsidize things of this nature?
Well, I don't know how much of the COVID money that was applied to this or if any. You know, I, I, them are, them are good questions that, you know, we have to figure out. But I also would like to make sure that, you know, we, we look at some of the wage and, and maybe the insurance.
Absolutely, I'm in favor of that.
There's, I just think they're important, you know.
Was it, I heard that we pay a traveling nurse, they, they, they make upwards of four hundred thousand? Is that, was that, did I hear that? But we're paying EMSs or people that can intubate and do actual lifesaving techniques, fifteen to twenty-two bucks an hour? Like, I mean, I'm not an expert in the field, but it just seems a bit odd.
We haven't used travel nurses in twenty years.
If you wanna speak, Hope, can you just come to the front, please?
We have not used any travel nurses at BMGH in twenty years.
No, and I wasn't, yeah.
We don't use travelers.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't, uh, I wasn't making reference to that, I was just, the amount that a traveling nurse makes, I was like, wow. I mean, I think doctors make that amount, right? I mean, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like a lot of money.
No, and I.
They don't make that much?
And, and commissioners, that's, that's why I pointed out the, the surrounding areas, you know, starting out from twenty-two to, to thirty-three bucks an hour. Then that's where I reach out and kinda get a, a comparable for, for EMS and, uh, paramedics. And, and maybe we will look at some of their numbers and, and see what we can do in a contract to make that work for these guys.
I think you, I think you've got your direction, so. All right, perfect. We'll take a fifteen-minute break. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order.
This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call the meeting back to order now. Uh, we're gonna jump to a couple items here, we have, uh, some guests with us that need to, they have, uh, other engagements they need to get to. So, we'll open up item ten. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the board of county commissioners to submit a letter opposing HR six-six-three-five. We have somebody in the audience that wants to speak to this?
I guess nobody else is getting to it.
I'm Dan Tamar, I'm the chairman of the Public Lands Use Advisory Council. It came to our attention of bill HR six-six-three-five, um, expressly to prohibit the use of aircraft, helicopter and fixed wing in the gathering and removing of wild horses on public land. And we feel it would be detrimental to the, uh, wild horse management system to do that. And we thought it would be appropriate for the county to have a protest letter or, I, I don't know what all of you guys can do, but a protest of some sort, um, an official protest from the county of this bill.
You know, when you read the bill and you see, I, even the information in there about, gee, the helicopter chased that colt? And, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I don't think those go in the bill. I think those are testimonies perhaps, but they shouldn't be part of a bill for everybody to look at because the people that wanna bring these bills are usually people that are from the, the big cities and truly don't understand the horse gathering. And I know, I've only been on a couple and a couple have been with helicopters, but those helicopters were so slow that two of the horses in the front stopped and had a fight. I mean, literally, I mean, I, I think it's who you hire for the helicopters. So, if they're going to, to, and I'm sure the BLM is on top of that, if they saw somebody was really running that fast and, and really detrimental to the horse gathering, that then maybe they wouldn't hire them again. So, I definitely think we need to, um, make our voice known, um.
To be clear on this particular bill, um, I was talking to some, uh, people and they said that Dina Titus has, uh, submitted this bill several years running and it's never gained traction. And they figured it was kinda just to appease her constituents in the Vegas area. But still, you never know, it could get thrown in on something else, it could slip through. I think if, without the use of, of aviation of any kind, the chances of having any productive gather would be.
Just the way the bill is written, it pulls at the heartstrings. And the people that don't understand are the ones that are pulled into it, so, um, I'm certainly in favor of us making a stand on this and, and hopefully pointing out something in our letter that, um, why it's so important.
I am, I as well supporting it. The, the one thing I think that needs to be brought up that they don't like to talk about is the they want to criticize the BLM for this, but they're all rioting, watching those horses drag their hind ends, starving to death out there because they have eaten the, all, everything down. So, it looks like the surface of the moon, I've never seen anything like that till this last summer when I went with, um, in Dow and they showed me some of those areas. Those horses were standing in bug dust with nothing to eat and they dragged their hind ends. And especially, I spoke to Pete Gokachia just a, a week or so ago and he said, where all the snow is where those wild horses are now, there's no water and there's no food. And he said, they were gonna be starting to drop like flies because of that. And I think that those things need to be pointed out, they would rather watch these animals starve to death than something, be productive, be done with them. And I just think that that's disgusting that that, that they do that, so.
I agree. My Pluac board, which most of my board is here, we're working on trying to come up with some sort of a plan that the county could get behind. I don't know what it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like. In my opinion, as, as the chairman and I'm, I'm also a rancher in the area, I'm sure you guys know that. I think public perception is a, the key to solving this problem because until you get the people in the city to realize what the exact problem is, they're not just a majestic, beautiful animal, which they are. But they're also supposed to be managed and have appropriate numbers for each use area. The HMA is supposed to have X and there, many places are hundreds of times over the appropriate use level. Like you said, with the horse, uh, up in the deep snow, I think that right now would be a very good time to get some pictures of that, but the snow's also three-four feet deep where these horses are really getting in bad conditions. Um, I was speaking with an individual earlier and we kinda brainstormed it a little bit and we thought if you could get, I don't know if you could get there with a snowmobile, that might be too noisy, but a helicopter or something and get in there and take some good pictures of these horses in really bad condition to show what reality is and not just what you see from the road where probably conditions are a little bit better for them. That would be incredibly, incredibly beneficial, but it would cost a little bit of money to do that. And I don't know if the, the commission would be able to pay something like that to, you know, contract somebody to get some.
I will tell you that I, I sat for a year on our lands bill and we had ranchers come in and people come in and tell us, you know, testify and testify. And we had pictures, we did, and unfortunately, they were horrible. And the only thing that we got in response was, well, you've got too many cows on and they didn't have enough food to eat. And that was it, so, no, it's a whole different thing that we'll talk about. But this letter is on, on the aviation and we need to, to.
And I think that we're gonna have, uh, hopefully, we can create a better presentation that's more on topic. This is more for the six-six-three-five bill. But we're hoping to come before you with, with some thoughts and Wayne might have something to add.
Well, uh, something that I'd like to add is an opinion and, you know, I, I did hear that, uh, the BLM, you know, they, they've made a statement that, uh, there's no money funding for gathering wild horses this year. Okay, but there is money funding to, to fix the repairing areas that they have damaged in Iowa Canyon. That's kind of an oxymoron, you know, we're, we're fixing the, fixing, putting a Band-Aid on the problem and we're not even addressing the problem. And in any mining industry or any maintenance industry that I've, I've ever been associated with, that is not a frugal endeavor. And, and we, we can't put Band-Aids on things, we have to go to the source. And unfortunately, it's, it's not the, it's not the local BLM. The local BLM and the state BLM should be, uh, should get a resounding pat on the back because I think they've done their homework and they've done their job. I think the, the federal, the federal level is where the problem is. And again, it's, it's with the Dina Titus's constituents that have the problem. You know, it's a bleeding heart, it, it's no longer a Disney movie. What we got going on out here south of Battle Mountain is atrocious. And, uh, I, I challenge anybody to go out there now that the, maybe the weather's getting a little better and, and drive up Iowa Canyon just a little ways and, and see what they see with their own eyes.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there any more discussion from the public? Yes, please come to the front.
Charlie Vaughn, I'd just like to encourage the, the board here to, um, just follow through with what we're hearing here today. The BLM has enough challenges in getting around up down and we're sure that they don't wanna take a tool away from them to be able to do that. So, I encourage the board here to stand and give that, so.
Thank you. Any more comment, questions? All right, so, do we need a motion or can we just give direction to draft the letter?
You can just give direction if you'd like.
Yeah, just give direction, maybe, Bert, maybe work with Suplack or something to come up with a letter that we think is, has some kick to it. Maybe the message of where we stand in Florida, Kansas.
Do you bet, we'll run it through legal to make sure it's right and.
Thank you. So, we'll move into item twelve. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the recommendation from Pluac, Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission Board to adopt Eureka County's code Title IX on RS two-four-seven-seven.
All right, uh, the Pluac has been working on this for years. Patsy used to be our representative, uh, back when Ray Williams was our, uh, chairman. Patsy used to be our representative back when Ray Williams was our chairman. So that was twenty years ago. So it's an ongoing issue. We felt that the Pluac, that Lander County has to have a direction, I guess you could say. A, something like Eureka put together where they basically are going back to their traditional RS-2477 with the Mining Act of eighteen sixty-six, I believe it was, when that was established. Where, and I'll read from the Eureka Code. "Any road traced, trail, canal navigable, waterway, or other route used by humans for travel by wheeled vehicles, horseback, foot, or boat, or otherwise. This definition applies to all highways established across public lands pursuant to mining law of eighteen sixty-six between the enactment of the statute in eighteen sixty-six, and it's repealed by enactment of the Federal Lands Policy Management Act in nineteen seventy-six." It's, with our discussion in Pluac, we felt that the two-four-seven-seven road in itself is not, by definition, it's a trail. And to, I'm losing myself a little bit here. If you just state that anything that qualifies as a two-four-seven-seven road is a two-four-seven-seven road and thus is not open to be closed, if that makes sense, then it kind of just gets right to the point. I know there was a lot of discussion about each road had to be mapped, and that would get very expensive. We developed a map twenty years ago, and I believe it's the official roadmap of Lander County. And there's, heavens, hundreds of roads on that thing. And if you had to map in detail each and every one of these roads, it would get highly expensive. So with a bill like this, Eureka Code, if there was, that would be Lander County's position. If it's a trail before nineteen seventy-seven, it's considered a two-four-seven-seven road. If there was contention on a specific route, road, waterway, whatever, that specific trail would then need to be looked at much closer. And if there's litigation or if it needs to have an engineer go through and do mapping of it or whatnot, that'd be a lot more cost-effective than doing every single road on the map. So that's where we stand.
If I'm correct and not misspoken, I think a lot of the problem is, is with the mining law of eighteen sixty-six, it's our right to these roads, these two-four-seven-seven roads. But so it's, we're having to prove ownership of those roads as opposed to them proving that we don't have ownership of those roads, right? So I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's kind of been part of the, one of the factors that's held this thing up. Because, I mean, we were dealing with this back in two thousand and seven, you know, and it's like it's gotten nowhere.
Counselor, were you the DA in Eureka when this was put together? Then I would appreciate your comments.
Okay, well, they went through a whole lot of stuff. They had, you know, committee meetings over and over again and came through it. Commissioner Sparks is correct, and the commentary is correct, that the federal government, or more accurately bureaucrats in the federal government, want to insist that you have to prove the existence of the road as opposed to them proving that it didn't exist. Far as I know, that still hasn't been settled in law as to who's got the burden of proof, but that's what you're talking about. Because it hasn't been settled, and even if it ever gets settled, let's face facts, people will litigate anyway. And they will try and change the Supreme Court membership over time to get their side to be the one that's winning. You need to probably map things out as best you can, would be my suggestion. But I thought, to be honest with you, I thought this had been done, you know, whatever, I thought it had been done thirty years ago.
I know there were a lot of attempts and efforts to do something with it. Now, the problem with mapping is that if you map and you submitted that map, but by chance you missed a road, then that road was no longer on the table, you know. So that was another, that was another problem.
Well, that's what Eureka's language tries to keep from happening. Keep in mind that somebody is going to try to interpret it against you no matter what you try. But that's part of the reason for the language. But having the map in addition and stating clearly on the map that the lack of a designation on this map does not mean that it is not a road. This is simply our attempt, our best attempt at getting the ones we know about and things along those lines. So if you word it that way, you should be okay. And in my recollection, I didn't go back through it after thirty years, but my recollection, twenty-five years, because I think this came in about, my recollection is about nineteen ninety-six or ninety-seven. So it's been about twenty-five years. It started, though, thirty years ago with USV Nye County, which I believe literally got started about thirty years ago right now.
So in the interim, it wouldn't hurt us at all to have a resolution like this? And we keep on going with what we were doing before, right?
I think, yes, you can do that kind of a resolution. The other thing, look at it. I can, you know, we could reproduce it. But if you wanted to, you could basically whole hog adopt their ordinance system. We could make a proposed ordinance system that is the whole title and adopt it here in Lander County. Now, like I said, I thought that had been done. I was rather surprised when I looked at the code. I mean, when that showed up on the Pluac's thing there, I said, don't we have that? And I flipped open the code and, nope. And I was like, okay. I could have sworn Ray Williams had been doing this sort of thing back twenty-five years ago.
So in the interim, is it discussed to go ahead and do that? They already have it in place if it's working for them?
Well, I mean, I read through it. I don't see unless there's something, the legal side of things that I'm missing. But I think it's a good thing because it sends a bit of a stronger stance of where we stand as Lander County. I mean, if we're willing to put an ordinance in place.
The RS-2477 itself is very short, and it just basically says if you put something across public lands, it's a highway. Okay, that is, it exists. It doesn't say who owns it. The nice thing about Eureka is that it says, on behalf of the people, we are taking, as the government closest to the people, we are taking ownership. And I'm not sure. It's a little audacious if you stop to think about it. But somebody's got to have it, and who else is going to actually go in and litigate it?
There's no way that they could take this ordinance and somehow use it in their benefit.
Well, they'll try.
That I'm missing. You see what I'm saying?
They'll try. That's why, that's the bit with the maps. You know, if you don't have it on the map, then they'll say it doesn't exist. If you do have it on the map, then they still are going to complain about somehow it's inaccurate or something. It's just, it's a problem no matter what. Because you've got to understand, you've got people that are, well, Google RS-2477 sometime and take a look at what the leftists are saying as to it being an outdated law and so on. All it says is that if you've got a highway, an existing highway, that is an existing trail, it continues to exist. You can't just close it. That is under FIPMA. You can't just close it because it says they exist. And that's all it is. And to me, that's not, that's, it's neither left nor right. It's just sort of there. It's describing what happened, and that you don't take rights away without compensation and so on. So I don't, I don't understand their theory that it's outdated, but they don't like it because wilderness areas, that is areas that they want to designate as wilderness areas, they can't do that if you've got a trail going across it. And so they've manufactured ways to ruin things. But I will tell you, case law has been in our favor. Those of you who sometimes pay more attention to cable, you might have seen ice road truckers. Well, those ice roads are RS-2477 roads. They have been so held in litigation in federal court up in Alaska. And they move, okay? It's not the same piece of ground. So you would think, and of course, I'm sure that the leftists were hoping, that they could do away with them by that fact. But the court said, no, the fact that we've been, people have been going across that area over and over again, we're not going to tell them they can't do it just because the ice shifted on them.
Exactly. Okay, well, I understand.
Louis Lonnie, I'm vice chair of the Pluac Board. I'm the instigator of getting this on your agenda. The reason for that is I realized what happened twenty-some-odd years ago with Ray Williams and them. And you had a change of district attorneys, and one of them come in and she dropped everything. She wanted everything changed. But I was afraid that if the county doesn't take this and get it filed and registered in Lander County, the bits of information I'm getting from some BLM sources, they figure within five years, they're going to own the roads, and there'll be a fee charged for you and I to go out on these roads. But this program here, in my opinion, gives the ownership of these roads, there's a right that belongs to Lander County. And if you read down through the one of Eureka's, you don't have to maintain them. That's your option. There's no cost. You don't have to have litigation. But the way it's going now, if you leave it sitting the way it is, the litigation is going to be there. And these attorneys are going to end up owning all these roads. I'm a native Nevada, and I mean, I've seen this happen for years and years and years. It's got to be stopped somewhere. The counties have got to stand up and take ownership or get something on paper. So when these problems come to you, you can say, look, we've got a ordinance on the books that says da-da-da-da-da-da, get out of our way.
Okay, thank you.
I think that, you know, in persuasion of this, I think that there's, you know, the time has gone on. Mr. Schaefer stated that this was twenty-five years ago. I can remember this, you know, running trucks out there through Lander and Eureka County. I can remember dealing with this a long time ago, back in the early nineties. And here on the Pluac Board, we keep revisiting this. Everybody in this room revisited this since nineteen ninety-seven. Why? You know, we need to quit spinning our wheels and move on to something that is more beneficial.
What do you think about the Eureka County's policies?
I think it's good, and it stood the test of time. It's cost-effective. I mean, I mean, why are we spending more money on this? Let's save some money and follow the lead. You know, let's lead, follow, or get out of the way.
If I could, Brian?
Yes.
I don't think that this, by adopting this, I don't think it's going to save you from litigation. But it'll be something in your toolbox that you can use when litigation comes. It may not be in five years. It may not be in ten years. It might be in twenty years, or it might be tomorrow. You don't know. It was a big push for a while, then it kind of went away. But it's just, it's just another tool in your toolbox. So it's stated, this is our stance. This is where we stand.
As a Montana native, I've seen it. The roads up there close. They close them all the time. Forest Service decides, oh, we're going to close this whole section's roads during hunting season. You can walk in. We have a cabin that's right in front of a wilderness, there ain't a road into it, and all it is is a fire danger. I think this, I agree. Brian, you said it perfect. Is this the start, but also staying on top of it and adding to it? From what it sounds like, Nevada's been dealing with this for twenty-five years, and it's almost like, you know, oh, I thought this was handled. Oh, I thought this was handled. Ryan hit my statement when he said it's this plus more. It's you guys staying on top of this and it's added to this document and make it ours. Not just Eureka's, and go ahead, maybe they'll copy ours. So I definitely support it.
Well, this board asked Pluac to come up with something, so that's why we're here today. And I'm kind of a pain in the butt for the rooster's board down there.
If not, it'll be closed. They'll get it.
He said, you should be chairman. No, no, I'll stay as vice chairman. You're doing a good job. You live in Battle Mountain. You know what's going on up here.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. So I'm ready to hear a motion. Is there any discussion from the public, questions?
Brian, I don't know that you guys need a motion. I think you just need to give direction to legal to move forward with an ordinance for the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it.
Good. All right. So we'll go back to, so Bill, direction?
I concur. We discussed that before. I was waiting for what I thought was an appropriate time, but you.
That's fine. All right. So six, I'm going to read it into the record. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove submitting a letter of support to the city of Ely, Nevada in conjunction with Nevada Northern Railway Foundation and their application requesting raise grant funding for the replacement and enhancement of the N-N-R-Y rail line between the city of Ely and the Shaffner connection in Alphie County. I've been asked to table this, so we're going to table it. And then we're going to move into item seven. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the purchase of an electrical marquee board for Austin, Nevada.
Commissioner, so we do have the funding. We do have the funding. Lakin has found it, so I think Miranda will present on the rest, but.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. How are you?
Good.
Good. Miranda Tremaine for the record. So we currently have no way to do any emergency broadcasting for Austin at this point. So any of our tourists or even our community for that matter, we have no way to communicate that. We also have businesses in Austin that no one really knows about as well. So I think it would be a multi-use type deal for Austin that would be very important.
So this is going to be a board election or what we have here about this?
Correct, yep. Yep. And then in the pic, you can see in the pictures, I don't, it's submitted to you guys. You can see where it's going to be and what it'll look like. And there's also other pictures in there. To my understanding, that's Lander County's property. We already have a sign there. I spoke with Endow, and they said everything was fine. We don't have to do any, anything, especially when it's working with a chamber as well and for emergency broadcasting, so.
The electricity that we're looking at, and the easiest, is to run back to the Lander County Convention and Tourism clinic.
Correct. And I spoke with Fred on that, and he said he was going to get you guys an exact quote. It's really hard to do that right now with as much snow as we have in Austin, so it could fluctuate come spring.
Yeah, have they okayed it?
A convention and tourism. So I was going to be on their meeting for last night, but they told me that since I'm going before the county, that they'll discuss that afterwards.
We are talking minimal, like under twenty-five dollars a year, I mean, for extra electricity is what they're saying. But we also wanted to remind you, this is double-sided, this marquee. And what happened is we did have a road closure, and we had no way to tell anybody until basically they got up there. So safety was one thing. I mean, what if something happens, we want the whole community to know. What a neat thing to have. And then the rest is, of course, the excitement of our events and things like that that you do. So like Bert said, we did find the money, and we found it for this year, so we don't have to go on next year's budget because it is a real safety and communicate, so.
Is it big enough to grab attention?
Correct. Yeah, so this one, they said it's about the size of, a little bigger than a piece of plywood. So, yeah.
Four by eight?
Yeah, so.
Okay, I will make a motion in the way of approving the purchase of an electrical marquee board for Austin, Nevada.
Okay, so that motion passes. Second from J.R. I'll, if they will say aye? Aye. Opposed, nay?
Proceed.
Motion carries.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Miranda. So we'll move into item eight. For discussion of possible action to give the county manager direction on budgeted fire station and painting facility. So this was something that we had in capital improvement projects, yeah?
Yeah, this is one of our projects, and I believe Aaron's going to speak to most of us. There's a few different options he's been through with our sheriff and with our fire chief down here, Rick Harless, who couldn't make it today. But I think that going into budget, that now it's an important time to get some direction from the commission and exactly how big or how small you guys would like to go on this, or if you guys would even like to move forward on it. I know there's been a lot of hours put in by Aaron and Ron and everybody trying to get these things to. I know there's been a lot, a lot of hours put in by, by Aaron and Ron and, and everybody trying to get these things together and, and putting different options, so I'll let Aaron run with it from here.
Is this gonna be where the old fire station was?
No, I don't think so.
No, it's right here, isn't it?
Right out here.
On the other side of the sheriff's office.
Yeah, and there, and.
The property out here, or, right here, right here. Okay, fine, you mind?
And there may be some, some leveraging of, of funds. I, I know that there's been some interest in, in a potential, um, truck stop going in over here, um, and using the access route to both serve the fire and the, and the truck stop. It is zoned for it, so there's nothing that we can say about it being or not being there. So that, that is something that's coming kinda down the pike. I'm not sure if it will come to fruition or not, but it sounds like it will.
Then another truck stop being there?
Right here, yes.
Well, I think the, yeah, okay, that'll be for a different time. We'll discuss it, but.
Yeah, I don't know that it'll even come before this commission because of the, the zoning. So if it fits the zoning and the, and the codes, then we.
Because I think that was some of the concerns the board had last time, was just a traffic study because you are around.
Well, I believe that was on the other side, so that was on headed down Lomair Road, that piece of property off to the right, right there. Is where the previous one was, and that one was the one that, that caused, because it wasn't properly zoned for it, so they couldn't do it there, and that's why it ended up back in front of you guys.
So the piece we're talking about is, is.
Right across from opinion.
Correct.
Somebody's, your internet's down today.
Bert, with that, will there be concerns with, I mean, if that's where our fire and everybody dispatches from, with that just, is that gonna be, got, it left to be a discussion concern for traffic?
Yeah, but I think that, uh, that the property, that we, our main lane that would be running out of there would be on our property, so we could keep that clear to make sure that we always have access for fire.
And if I may, throw a number for the record. This is, uh, not gonna be a full-blown, it'll be a full-blown fire department, but we're also maintaining one on the other side in town. So this'll be like a substation. I believe we got, what, three bays put in and possibly four? So this'll be, uh, it'll be a training center. It'll have fire trucks on this side. And then the other one will be, once we get this one done, that'll give us the opportunity to refurbish that one down there also.
Doesn't seem to wanna connect, Commissioners. I do apologize. I came in early this morning and set it all up, and when we switched over to Jason, it doesn't seem to wanna work with me. I have my, my Revit model here, so what I'm gonna do, just to, if it's okay with Bert, I'm gonna put my computer in front of you guys, so you can at least get a gist of, of a three-D model, and I can kinda talk globally about it. So, it's kind of, uh.
Can you see that?
I've been asked to kinda help, kinda start a conversation. So everything that you're seeing there, this is all schematics. Nothing is solidified. We have two properties that are in consideration. You have your existing firehouse that's located on the, um, north side of I eighty, and then we started looking at potentially utilizing this complex. Uh, so those are the kind of, uh, the open discussion that needs to be had, and, and some direction ultimately from, all the constituents involved in the community is, is where do we wanna put this thing? And so, to kinda start off globally, the biggest concern that's been brought up is, well, if we're on the north side of eighty, and we need to get to the south side of I eighty during an emergency, you know, how does that look? And, and if the firehouse is over here, and, and we gotta get to the north side of I eighty, how does that look? Uh, so that was kind of a big concern. Uh, one item that I looked at was, where's the majority of your population? And when we looked at that, the majority of the population is south of I eighty, if you look at everything, uh, all the out, outlining areas and everything. The majority of Landry County's population is south of I eighty. Uh, so that was kinda interesting. Another thing is, is that, um, the existing fire, uh, house, it's, as it's sitting right now, is extremely landlocked. As you guys know, it's, it's really tight with that parcel, so there's not a lot of room for a true fire operation per se, but it has worked obviously up to this point, so that is a possibility. When we looked at that facility, you could say, okay, should I retrofit that facility and bring it up to code and, and, and do it that way? That is a possibility. Um, and, and so it, it comes down to budgetary means, and, and if you wanna preserve that existing structure. If you're to ask me, should I keep that structure? I think you could. I think you could invest a decent amount of money into that structure and keep it and rehabilitate it, and, and bring it back to a positive light, do some outside stuff to make it look more conducive for that surrounding community. So to save that existing firehouse structure is most certainly a possibility. Uh, in your packet, I've given you kind of a global of what that structure would look like, uh, if you were to retrofit it. And so I did, um, give that to you, and still this back, so I can actually see where I'm at. And so that would be more about, we started looking at a, a retrofit design, or maybe even a new building on that site. So, uh, one of the options that I've given you there is, uh, to, to tear that building down and to rebuild it on the north side of, of I eighty where it sits today. Uh, it's got, uh, office space upstairs, so it's kind of a two-story structure. Um, trying to utilize that small space as best we can, uh, but kinda keeping the building layout about the same. So that's, uh, kind of a, you can do retrofit in that building, or you can tear it down and rebuild. What we're seeing right now in retrofit costs is it's extremely costly. We're at anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot for retrofit, and it just, you know, we're the same cost on rebuild. Uh, so it's kind of, um, I've been steering more towards lately with these cost influxes, is, is it's almost best to just do the reconstruction. It can eat the cost of the demolition and some of those things. Re, uh, new construction of a new building, especially like a firehouse, is, is important to be safe and things like that. And so it'd be my recommendation, if you were gonna do anything, it would not be to retrofit that facility, but to do some sort of rebuild. Um, we look at firehouses and things like that as a type-one structure. If there was an event, your community could go there, hide out in an earthquake or things like that. So you want it to be designed top-notch and, and to support those seismic conditions and things like that. So, if you wanted to do a building on this complex, um, and I do apologize, I don't have my model in front of me. What I wanted to caution you about this complex is, is that it's unfortunately, and I, I don't mean to disrespect anyone that's part of this, uh, planning of this facility, but it's just not planned very well. We're missing, on this end here, we have about a hundred and fifty feet of, of vacant land before we hit our property line. And on the backside, we've got about a hundred and twenty-five feet of vacant land before we hit our property line, so it's almost semi-unusable. Uh, the way that the sheriff's office is sitting now, it's kinda pushed farther to the north, uh, encroaching on that property line. So to, to position this complex with a, a fire station and things like that gets pretty, uh, difficult, I think. Um, so that's something that we're gonna wanna consider. If you do wanna put a firehouse on this complex, I think the county needs to take a step back, and as part of that project, master plan your complex out, and let's get a overall look of what the whole complex is gonna look like, so that we don't add another building to this complex and continue to make it look kinda piecemealed. Um, how we can do that is like real easy through landscaping purposes, and then further identify what we wanna do with the remaining lot. Uh, so the layout that I've given you on the proposed firehouse on this side of the, of the highway is, um, it has a lot on there. So it's got a training facility for the fire, and it has a training facility, um, for the sheriff's office as well. The fire station itself has, uh, it's pretty extravagant. They've asked for a, a lobby space that they can have the old fire truck broadcasted in that lobby space, so you'll see a really pretty, uh, looking lobby space there. Um, and then, um, a, a bunch of bays that can also house your new truck, your ladder truck that you have, um, and things like that. So when we were placing all that infrastructure on this complex, it just got so tight. Um, so my recommendation, if you were gonna do a firehouse on this side of the highway, it would just be the firehouse and any training facilities you'd wanna put somewhere else.
Well, that was, one of my, my comments was exactly that, was why don't we, if we're gonna do something with the old firehouse, why don't we just make it a training facility?
We don't have enough room.
Don't have enough room?
Nope, Ron. This one here is set up for three to four trucks. We got fourteen trucks. So what we was planning on doing here is putting a ladder truck, a brush truck, and one structured truck here, and then the other equipment, the other platform truck, the other structured trucks, and the wildland trucks at the other building. So the initial plan was to build something here that we came up with, because if you was to tear that building down right now, you have no place to put, store those vehicles during the wintertime or during construction. So we looked at the county at one point. It, it wasn't costable or feasible, so that's when we decided, okay, we can put like a substation on this side, put our equipment in there, and then move some equipment around, uh, during the, uh, the construction of the other building. So you're looking at possibly two projects.
Now, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Ron, but Jesus, man, it's, it's Landry County. How big are we? I mean, it's like, I mean, it's, I just, yeah, I just, I don't, I don't follow that, that thought process completely. I mean, I understand we have to have it, but it's, it's, it's again, we are Landry County. We'll talk countywide. We have six thousand people, but yet we have fourteen trucks, and it's like, we have, it's, yeah, I just.
You're a barber. You was a barber. You know exactly what you got.
Yeah.
So Commissioner, the, the other thing that we need to, me and Aaron just had a conversation this week with the Porter Group, and getting grant funding for an existing structure to refurbish is much easier than for new structures. So one of the, one of the thoughts that we're having is, if we get a fire station built here, then we can, then we can get funding to refurbish the old fire station and kinda bring it up, 'cause I think Aaron could get into some of the issues with trying to piece that building together. It's multiple buildings tied together, different roof structures, different bearing walls, um, that causes a lot of, lot of issues that we just can't go over there right now with.
Yeah, so the, you're talking the existing firehouse.
This is the schematic of what we're looking at.
Proposed here for this complex here, yeah. I just cut the roof off of the model for you, so you can kinda see into the building what, what it's looking like.
So it's got four, four bays. So with all this equipment we have, the main, main concern with a lot of it, you gotta keep your water warm to where it doesn't freeze. Is there any way to build something on that doesn't have to be very elaborate, but it's just an enclosed shell that you can stock equipment that is accessible, that if you do need it? And you keep your primary ones, the ones that are used the majority of the time, in the forest stalls? Something like that?
Yeah, no, we can skin this cat any way you want, but to touch on Bert's comment real quick, that structure over there does have a lot of different additions that have gone on, and, and so that's the unfortunate part of that structure, is it, it is a, uh, a piecemeal building where certain walls are being loaded upon by things that they probably weren't intended to be loaded on. So, that's where we're not really recommending a retrofit of that facility. But to, back to your comment, Commissioner, in terms of, of how we skin this cat, you can absolutely, you could do it just a steel red iron building, throw four bays in there, call it good. Uh, that is totally up to this, this board. I, I am just trying to help facilitate the conversation by taking the comments from everyone and trying to put that into, uh, design models that you can visualize and see. And so that's what we've done there is, again, we've got two models in front of you. One's kind of a occupying that structure over there, the other's kinda developing something on this complex here. If you wanna do like a red iron building, you absolutely could. This facility here is more geared towards not only housing of the infrastructure, but also trying to meet the needs of the sheriff's department. There, uh, on that top floor of that facility, on the backside, there's actually dormitories for the sheriff's office. They've had some discussion about not being able to house, um, certain employees during certain times, so there's some, uh, crew quarters there, uh, as well as, uh, office space down below. Um, so there's a virtual training room in that facility for, uh, some of the sheriff's office stuff that they have. They have, uh, some virtual training that they'd like to get involved in deeper, and so that facility also houses that. Um, so right now, it is a dual-use combined facility, and as part of that, the county needs to recognize that as long as the sheriff and the fire department are all friends, it's a good facility. But if they weren't, and there were some issues there, who controls that facility? Might be something that you'll need to, to, to bring up. This facility also has heated, uh, and air conditioning throughout the building, so that's the current schematic design. But again, this is nothing solidified. Outside of that, oh, go ahead.
As, as the drawing is with everything, you're talking the sleeping quarters and that. Have we even started looking at, was there money budgeted last year for this, or? And what was the tune of it? And what do you think that the cost of this is?
Yeah, so there was a current, uh, budget allocated for this, I think in upwards of seven million. And right now, the current phase-one design of the facility on this complex is, is sculpted to be beneath that. That does not account for the access road that needs to occur, or any complex issues that needs to happen here. But we were looking at around seven and a half million was the budgetary scope.
So this one that I'm looking at here has training facilities for both, uh, uh, police and fire?
That's correct. And so what you're seeing, there's, there's multiple training facilities broadcasted on that model. One of them is for fire to actually have a standing structure that they can have live fire on. And then the other one is an elongated structure where the sheriff's department would have live training facility and shooting range. Uh, it was intended to have a concrete roof line and a concrete wall lines for any accidental discharges. Um, but again, I'm kinda recommending, just based on layout, that we try to find some other land somewhere else for that on the fire side. That thing puts out a lot of smoke, and so it's best that we put it, you know, somewhere where the downwind component isn't as much of an issue.
I mean, I'm all about, um, I mean, it's our volunteers, and I did serve on it for some years, and, uh, and these guys are putting their lives at stake, and they're not, uh, you know, they're, they're paid purrs basically, and it's a small amount, and it's just, I, I believe they need, they deserve something nice. And as a county, we can't afford it. But again, I do wanna be sensible in the approach, you know? I don't wanna build the Taj Mahal in Landry County, but I do want a nice facility. And I drive by and you look at the facility in Eureka, it's a very nice facility, and, uh, there's no reason why we can't have a facility like that, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
But I, I definitely think we need to, I just, what are the, how many rigs did you say we had, Ron?
Fourteen. That's not included.
But how, how many of them are used on a regular basis?
Fourteen. You got the bit, uh, taken part, uh, that's what we use. You know, we've got, uh, two big structure trucks, as you know, two tankers, two ladder trucks. That's your structure equipment.
Yeah, but it's like the, like the ladder trucks, they're not used on a continual basis. We have them for, like, if we need it, we have it. That's why I'm saying that. And I'm not saying, when I made my comment, to scope it all down and make it all red iron. I'm just saying, could there be something that we added to it? That all this equipment that we have that is in secure quarters, and it's maintained temperature-wise, so it doesn't freeze, but it's not as elaborate as the rest of the building. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I was saying. To where we could keep everything under one roof if we needed to, and then, and then it just leaves that building to do something else with him.
Absolutely.
Couldn't they do a, some of the training area to go with the storage of the vehicles? Could, like, if they wanted to do training in there, they could pull them out and have the roof.
You bet.
Well, my concern, Ron, is, on part of that, is to, to help Aaron out here a little bit. On part of that training on one of these is for the virtual machine. Okay, so we need a pretty decent-sized room with, with higher roofs for that. That's pretty much, uh, the training there. The other training area that is in there, uh, fire department could use that also, and that's something that we haven't discussed at this point. But one training room would work for both. What we're trying to incorporate in here as far as the training is, because we're going to be, uh, we're putting on our own academies here. So that's why you see the dormitories upstairs, the rooms, uh, which we, we can discuss. But that's, we're, we're making, we'll put two together. Training for the academy, training for the fire department. But one room, one training room could work for both. See where we're going there.
Yeah, there costs, and again, I'm not advocating for this at all. I'm just, I'm simply a tool to help these guys kinda put it on paper, and, uh, and you guys can make your decisions. This isn't something that I'm advocating for. I wanna make sure that's clear. Uh, the other part is, there's some cost savings by having, keeping your existing structure where it is and building elsewhere. When we looked at housing your infrastructure during construction, if we nuke that building over there, where do we put everything? There's about a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cost that would be associated with getting some sort of tent structure that could house all those trucks and heat it for the year. And I was assuming we could accomplish that in a one-year timeframe. So that's something else to keep in mind, is where do I put all these trucks during the construction phase, if you choose to go over there? And again, I think Bert wanted to bring this in front of the commission so that, one, you guys could get teed up on kind of the back, behind the scenes, what things have been going on. And then, two, I think it might be best, uh, to maybe set up another type of, uh, community meeting with your constituents and, and kinda i-iron out some of these things, if you'd like. Totally up to you. Some, some jurisdictions like to see a community-based approach, uh, even deeper than what we're doing now. So it's totally up to this commission. Totally up to you, some, some jurisdictions like to see a community-based approach, uh, even deeper than what we're doing now, so it's totally up to this commission.
Ron, one of my questions, have you had meetings with your volunteers to see kind of like what model, I mean, is it agreed with like all your volunteers that, yeah, this is the model we'd like and this is what we'd like to see?
The answer to that is yes and no.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the discussion came up originally on, on, uh, when we wanted to refurbish ours, uh, the department was wanting to keep it all right there. And that's what we looked at, that's how Aaron got involved, and, and as you guys know, we have taken over the old Sheriff's Office. So you have the old Sheriff's Office building, then in nineteen seventy-two, they built toward Broad Street, uh, four bays. That's, that's where our, uh, structure trucks are at, and the two mini pumppers, that was there. Then later on in the eighties is when they extended out to the alley toward the Al Motel, which gave us two more bays. Uh, and now, uh, where we've taken on the other and we have acquired more equipment, we wanted to take out that wall between the fire hall and the Sheriff's Office, move back into the old Sheriff's Office and the animal spade. This is where we come into issues because the walls that they put originally in seventy-two, they're not, they won't hold weight anymore. I, I believe I heard at one point, and Aaron can correct me, they're not caught, they're not filled with cement, concrete blitz, they're just one on top of the other. And then, of course, we added on once again after that in the eighties, so it's going to cost a lot of money to tear out that stuff and do it, and like Aaron said, he's probably right, you know, but that would have housed our equipment. But then it was brought up, uh, during the topic conversations of where we're going to put it. Bert and I got together and some of us, and we thought we could put it behind the county shop down there, well, as Aaron said, there's an added expense on that. So then they came up with putting a little substation here where we could put some equipment on this side of the freeway, that's why there's only four bays. And then start, get this one done, then go after the other one and figure out where to put the equipment and stuff like that. So that's kind of a history, so yes, the fire department was brought into it, they wanted it on the north side of the freeway. Myself and, uh, the captains and, uh, uh, the chief was involved in putting it here, so they have seen the design on it. They have approved the design on it, for lack of better words, a substation. Then the Sheriff's Office at the same point in time was looking at building places for the academy, which remember was going to be out at the airport, and where we got the virtual system set up right now in the double white at the county building, which is not big enough because we've got more screens. So we got together and decided we could use one training center, we could put, we could build this building to accommodate two different outfits and save, save a bunch of money on that.
Let me ask you this, Aaron, what would it, what would the, do you have a rough idea of what the cost would be to rehabilitate the existing building, fire hall that we're in now?
Uh, yeah, I can't off the top of my head, I think it was in upwards of four and a half million. To, there's some really weird things going on, like when they did the addition, like there was a, a gas meter and all these meters attached to the original building, and then they added on or however they did that. So you're looking down this alleyway of, of utilities separating the two buildings, things like that just get so costly.
And then what could you, what could you build if you just tore it down, a, a similar building half square footage, was, for four and a half million, you're going to get a pretty nice building?
You're, you're definitely going to get a good building for sure, it's going to pretty much be in the same parameters as the existing one is for the most part.
I think that'd be the way to go.
See the county, that section of ground that's, uh, by La Mer Store, that's in front of the, uh, car washes, is that Landor County property, or is that, that's private property?
No, it's private, that's.
Okay.
And then it comes down to if you do retrofit, where do you house your infrastructure during that construction, for sure?
Some of the add-ons are, uh, pretty deep, but to me, a fire station, like you said, to build this beautiful building at seven million dollars, but then we're not even able to house our equipment, I'd rather, I, I mean, to me, I, I like Eureka, the bays are there, you go firmly, the fire trucks are there, that's, if we go too building, I understand that, but the hard part for me is we're going to do seven million dollars for four trucks, and we have fourteen? You know, I, I just, I don't see it, I, the number one priority is make sure the trucks pull out of a, of a, of a heated bay and, and everything's there, the water's there to feed, and then some stuff off the back for the training. I, I mean, is it, I don't know, I just, you know, you probably look at the, at the wants and definitely look at the needs.
For the old facility, which does need to be taken down from working in there, um, in the eighties, the inmates started digging through the cement after an earthquake, and you could see through, um, so I know, I know what that structure is and that it's been mealpiece and that it, when it rained, that you, it soaked in there, and it's, it needs to be taken down. I have been looking, there are a bunch of federal grants now, especially because of all of the earthquakes, and that building is not considered earthquake safe, that there's a lot of grants that can be done, um, that I think that Porter Group could help with, just on those, on that kind of thing again, by itself. And I think that that facility should be utilized for grants because I just have a hard time tearing that down and building right back there in such a small place. Um, but if you could utilize grants to do it, it's feasible and it's a little bit easier to swallow, uh, but just to tear down and rebuild there, and I understand the nostalgia of it, and that's, I know part of it that's tight, and I respect that, but I would like to see it, part of it done with grants, and I know for a fact that are out there, especially for, um, those type of buildings, um, to make them for one, just earthquake safe, and there's money out there for that alone.
And, and, yeah, and again, I, I, I kind of agree with Mike on this point was that if you're going to put it out here, I'd like to see you have a nice firehouse where you house all your equipment, people can come in and see, and then you take your training facility, and maybe we put that where the old place is, and you make it a police, you make it a fire, you make it county. County needs to do training, it's a training, that's what it is, it's a training facility. Uh, that to me would make more sense, rather than being piecemealed out, but that's my opinion, so.
I just wanted to add something if I could, Aaron, I mean, what helped us out, I mean, I know in the, in the mining world, almost forty years' experience with that and leadership, what we found was we would build something or build a plant, get it done, and then re- recognize we, we didn't do a very good needs assessment.
Right.
Or a risk assessment, and then, and Mike knows what I'm talking about here, and then you find out later, oh, let's spend another so many millions to fix what we could have had to begin with, so my only input from my standpoint is, is making sure we do a good risk assessment, needs assessment on what's needed to safeguard not only public safety, but firing into the future, right? Like what do we need even thinking long-term, and putting something together that's, if you're going to spend seven million, it should be.
I see our first worry is we, we need more room for, we need a better bay for the trucks. You know, we, we got great equip, we got the best equipment in northern Nevada, but we're, we're, you know, we're plugging it in at the, at, at a continent, at a quantum hut somewhere, you know, we've got a, a entryway with a, a fire engine display and everything else, beautiful trading rooms. It's like if, if there's available grants for that building, then move that down there, and if it helps to get the grants, if it's, I don't know how they work, but if it's law, you know, for law enforcement personnel training, there's got to be grants to help with that building, even if we have to add a little bit to this one to make it, but we need to make it the building one, because the first thing you want to do is just like, well, we can have these trading rooms and everything else, and five years down the road, we're saying.
And I don't disagree, I absolutely agree with that, but the issue we have, the main issue on keeping it on the north side of I A D is because, uh, and I agree with what Aaron, Aaron's saying, our population is growing out here, but right now I have five firemen that live on this side of the highway. Everybody else lives on the other side, and so what I didn't want to get into me personally is build a great big building on this side, and this is my personal opinion. And then at eight o'clock in the morning or three thirty in the afternoon, a big fire call, and I got fifteen firemen coming from town, as the kids and everything are leaving school, and we're dealing with this overpass. That's my biggest concern. So if we hit the substation like we're talking for now, or whatever, now you've got firemen on this side, you've got firemen on that side, we could go to a fire. But I don't, I don't like this overpass, and you've all been there, when, when the mine gets off work, when the kids get off school, this thing is plugged up. I watched the highway patrolman the other day, or a law enforcement officer while I was in court, stopped three vehicles on this overpass, and it, it caused a plug-up. So, that's just something to keep in mind.
That's a good point, I mean, it's, I see that point. All right, so we just need, uh, the direction for the budgeted fire station, so what do you, what do you guys want to do?
And one other comment I might make is I agree, you know, we're talking seven million on this side, and we're talking another four or five million on the other side. Uh, but by working together with two different outfits, if we did ten million over there as an example, to build a big one, and I'm guessing, you're going to still wind up putting more money on this side for the training facilities and that type of stuff, so you're going to spend X amount of dollars regardless.
So, I'll sit down.
Well, if we, if we go the two and if we wait for grants on the other one, because we can't, we don't want to do them both at the same time anyway, so we can just go ahead with this one, and then, um.
With the one we have proposed in front of us?
Yeah, yeah.
And then work on the other one later.
Yeah.
But I think there needs to be direction to, Bert also has ability to look at the, the, I guess, the needs. Like a needs assessment, what's prumper to, you know, I, I like a neutral stance to say this is, this is a reality, but you know what, this, this one might not be. The, the, the sleeping quarters and that, that, to me, that's, uh, that's a want, you know, to bring somebody in from out of town, and really, are we shorting our hotels from getting the rooms, or, or, you know, are we?
Fine, fine, let me, let me clarify that for you. The housing that we put upstairs, that is strictly for the academy, when we put on our academy, it's not only going to be for Landor County, but there will be people coming from different counties to go to the, the law enforcement academy here, that was for those people to stay during the week, uh, as opposed to motel. And we were going to charge, uh, a fee for that.
Okay, so.
That is the, that's the reason for the, the rooms.
Okay, you bet. So, like I said, I just, my opinion is, I think, like I said, full needs assessment, oh, some wants and they're definitely.
Yeah, I don't think you, yeah.
Is what I would like to see, if you don't, if you don't mind, is if maybe we can, um, we can come back with the, the wants and the needs, but expect to see a bigger budget come in front of you guys during budgeting for this, because Mike's spot on. I think that we could double stack some trucks, have some bays that are double stacked, you know, so we can fit more vehicles in, or more in the same heated area, and, and also have access in and out, I think that we're, we're pinched on ground here, as Aaron spoke, and we're pinched on ground where the, the existing fire station is. Um, but I think that if we want to do it right, the seven million isn't going to touch it.
Right.
Um, and if, if we want something that later we're all going to come back and kick ourselves for and go, well, why'd we do that? Um, we'll, we'll move forward with this seven million, but I, but I was, what I would like to see is the wants and needs come back before, so Aaron could present again, and, and then bring a bigger budget forward for something that would work for Ron and Rick and, and the community as a whole. Um, and then we can, at a later date, go chase these big grants, the refurbished buildings, because that's where the money's at, they will give you the money to refurbish. They just won't give you for a new structure.
Right. Is, Bert, is Eureka volunteer, or is it a volunteer, or is it a fire department?
No, it's volunteer.
Volunteer.
It's volunteer, okay.
Okay, well, that sounds good to me, and that's the line I was going to go down, is maybe just get together, find out what the needs and wants are, and get a little bit more of the complete package, with the understanding that it could definitely be over seven million dollars.
And that's the direction we need, and the, and the understanding that hopefully the commission can, because I don't want Aaron getting up here and getting, you know, crucified for bringing a twenty million dollar project to you guys without some sort of direction to, to up the size of the project.
Twenty million is a pretty big number.
No.
A couple of things to add to that, one, if we could, if we could come to you with a, what we think it would take to kind of rehabilitate the complex as a whole. I think it's really important that you do a master plan of this complex, if you are considering putting that structure here. And maybe we could propose some landscaping things, some frontage improvements, and maybe working with them, and maybe they'd be willing to do a little bit as well. And then the second piece, and Bert mentioned it a little bit, is there's a travel center that's looking at coming in right next door here. Uh, it looks like they've got all the, uh, necessary zoning and things like that in place to, to do that, uh, so that'll be coming through the billing department. We propose on behalf of Public Works is, you know, would you guys be willing to do a shared roadway? And so they may be willing to produce some plans that show that they might help us develop that road, uh, that would extend to the firehouse, which could alleviate some funds as well. So we could get some direction to master plan your complex as well, I think that would really help, so.
Yeah, and I think so the commission is, whereas what I'd like to do with, with Aaron is leverage some of, you know, maybe use the same parking lot for both facilities and leverage some of our existing infrastructure to, to complement what's next, and then not have different structures looking different, you know, matching brick structures and things that look professional when somebody pull into your community.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, well then, uh, we'll move on to item nine.
Thank you.
Uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the appointee of one commissioner to sit on the Nevada Naco Board, Nevada Association of Counties.
So, Alan, can I just make a motion?
Yeah.
Have, since Patsy has done that in the past, let go ahead and, I mean, Patsy, just sit on that board?
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. All right, Patsy, so I think you, you know what we expect as a board, right? We'll be watching, all right. I think it's going to be good, so. Um, item eleven, for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove the project and funding for the renowned health fitness court in an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Um, before we get started, I know it's a big price tag, and we're going to kind of come through that here in a minute, uh, but we do have the money in the budget for this year's budget, depending on what you guys want to do, if you want to move forward. Um, that said, uh, we got, we were awarded the grant from Renown, which was fifty thousand. That money will go to the fitness association, um, on top of that, if this is approved today, a hundred and five thousand will go to them as well. The remaining, uh, fifty-five thousand that's in there, that a hundred and sixty we were talking about, um, will either need, be decided if you guys want to change the color, which is an added thirty-five thousand, so we can cut that off the top if you wanted to, and then the concrete, I think, is in there for twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so I'm confused, so not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand, we have a total project of a hundred and fifty-five thousand is, and then a grant of fifty thousand leaves us a total of one oh five, but you're saying this one sixty is an additional amount?
So, then, yeah, I must have missed explaining that, Brian, so let me start that, so at a hundred, a hundred and five thousand and the fifty-five thousand dollar grant was the original price for this project. The additional that's in your packet is the concrete, and if you guys want to change the schematic.
Which is an additional five thousand, potentially, right?
No.
You're talking additional hundred and sixty thousand?
Yeah, the fifty-five thousand grant's not in this right now, so it's not even.
It's just an additional fifty thousand, so the fifty thousand is the grant, the project was a hundred and fifty-five thousand. We, it was a hundred and five, we added an additional fifty for the designs that he's trying to explain to you, so it's just an additional.
So we're having a total project cost of two hundred and five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Um, so moving forward, next month, we will have equipment in the park to finish up our lighting project and some of the other things we have going. So with that, if you guys want to move forward with this project, we have things we need to move, so with the equipment, that's why this is before you today. So within the next month, there are things in the park that we'll have to move, lighting, power, which is not a big deal, because the equipment's already going to be there to finish our power project that we're doing. So that's why it's before you guys, if you want to move forward with this or not.
So, uh, back when we discussed this the first time, was that, that, were we looking at an amount of two, two hundred plus?
We were looking for one fifty-five.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so when, uh, N N R D A was here, the one fifty-five was for the project minus the concrete, they didn't include that.
Yes, okay, do you remember?
And if you guys want a different schematic, if you don't want a different schematic, we can throw that, that out the window, and that's a, you can cut thirty-five thousand off the top of this cost now. But if we go with their schematic, it's going to be the purple renown.
Yeah.
That's in your packet.
Versus something like.
Something you guys want to decide on that you want different.
Is this all outside?
Yes.
Had any of you ever visited the one in Elko?
Yeah, I have.
What did you think of it?
It's pretty, I mean, it's pretty cool, it is pretty.
Except it's in the wrong area.
I know, it's a horrible area where it's at.
Where's it at? I'd like to look, where is it?
It's, uh, you know, Cimarron Rest?
Yeah.
That park back, that sits it back.
Okay, that's in there.
The homeless and all are, all of, yeah, but, but I guess it's okay, but I don't know. But, but I guess it's okay, but I don't know if I would've spent a hun, two hundred thousand to put that in.
So how is this gonna fit over by the swimming pool, correct?
Yes.
So how, where is that going to fit?
So where the splash pad is and the concrete meets the park, um, it'll go off that concrete going towards into the park. So that dirt area that we have now, that'll all be covered in this concrete. Now we have lighting there that was put in when the rec center was built. There's a drain there, but we'll, we'll miss the drain and then the power box that was originally put in three years ago for the power that we are doing now in the park will need to be moved. If we don't do this project, nothing needs to be moved. But sensing we're already going to be in the park, putting the rest of the power in, it would be very simple to do it now.
It doesn't go over to like where the picket cables and that are, so it's.
No, it's only a thousand square feet.
So it's more in that parking lot?
No, it's more from the splash pad concrete into the park, so where the rec, rec center dumpsters are. And then you have the splash pad and the workout equipment already, it'll go, it'll butt up right to that concrete going into the park, so it'll flow very well together.
And the ice skating thing's gonna go in there too, or?
That's off to. Well, that's off to the right, so it's already there.
I don't think I'm in favor of adding the renown color. I think we can live without that.
Okay.
Well, is it adding the renowned, or you're painting not the.
No, no, the renowned color's on there, yeah.
You're painting not the.
Yeah, you're painting not the.
So here's another caveat to that, that I was also thinking, Patsy, if you wanted to save the thirty thousand now and do the renown color now, a year down the road, I'm pretty sure we can paint something different for way cheaper. Um, the county can, we can ourselves, so. But that's totally what you guys wanna do.
Basically thirty thousand dollars for a paint job?
Yeah, which I think a year down the road, we can change that up and do something different for a thousand bucks.
And did we discuss on the, uh, the, the flooring of this, because it's gonna be outside, right?
It does, it doesn't need winterized and you don't need to remove it. That was another question I asked after our conversation, so it'll stay up year round.
And then if, if it comes to needing to be replaced, do we know a cost of what it would cost to replace it?
To replace the equipment? No, I don't have.
The, the floor that it all sits on.
I don't have that, but I can look into that.
I think it's repair grants to cover their, if they come back for repair grants, do.
So the, the, the concrete is what, twenty-five?
Yeah, I think it's in your packet for twenty-five.
Yeah, so we're up to a hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, I had looked into the ones that are around, different places around the United States. So you don't have the blue backing either. They have your community come in, a lot of them have the community come in and they do different paint jobs on. The, the murals, which, um, are very cool too. So when you got, I would like to see if we're gonna paint it in a year that we do and figure out what we're gonna do as far as murals or whatever as well at, at the same time.
I'll bring that back before you with different options in a year or so, if that's the route you guys wanna go. And then, yeah, with our community colors.
Well, and they just, I watched and they were just like the same thing that went on inside the pool, they had that same idea and they had people from the community. I think in Albany, Oregon, they had the community come in and it was very cool.
Painted mural, they did.
It was, and then they take a little bit more, especially if you are doing it in the summer and you have those kids involved and they're less likely to vandalize it if they have a dog, a little bit of a dog in the fight, just a suggestion.
I agree.
Sean, have we had discussions with, I guess, when, I mean, when this came out, the county and the gym at the school and all that, so they're, they're, they're fine with this?
Yep, they're all fine with it. Uh, we talked to Tony, he said he'd be there at the ribbon cutting if we asked him to and he said he's totally fine with it.
We have a motion?
So what's the full amount, but if we're gonna paint it ourselves, then what's the?
One hundred and thirty, not sixty-nine, one thirty.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the project and funding for Renown Health Center Court in an amount not to exceed one thirty. Is that correct?
Yep.
We have a motion, second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
To clarify, that means it will be the renown purple when we cut the ribbon and then in a year or so, we'll bring different ideas back for, but it's still saving us thirty grand now.
Yeah.
Okay, just, very good.
And then we have a year to plan what we wanna do with it ourselves instead of rushing it.
Yep.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll move into item thirteen, for discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove the Austin Court Clerk job description.
I imagine this came to us from Judge Billy, right?
Um, between him and I, we worked on it, yes.
And, and it's similar to the Arjenta one?
Yeah.
Then I will make a motion that we approve the Austin Justice Court Clerk job description.
Motion, so Patsy made the motion, Mike seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And fourteen, correspondence reports, future agenda items.
I have a question, um, for Don. Is there like a policy or, I don't know if it's even a procedure, but a strategy for our, our roads and bridges and, and the, the maintenance of the county? To where we go out on, on what, how the sand trucks go out or the plows in these freak storms and stuff?
We, uh, yes, we, it's not really written policy, but we hit the main arteries first, like Hilltop Road, Old A to A, uh, Main Street's not ours, Broad Street ain't ours. But around the schools, we hit them first and then if we, you know, what's that?
And your bus routes.
Yeah, and the bus routes, that's around the schools, uh, um, and then we go move out from there.
Okay, and that's, is that your, your calling? You just look at the weather and go out or is there something saying, hey, at this storm, we go out, do we go out after the snow's falling or?
Well, um, we, it snows, obviously. And then, uh, but we're, we're starting a new program like the state does with the pre-wet, the, oh, shucks, what's that called?
The mag.
The mag, it's, it's a brine system, but mag guys don't like calling it mag, but it is mag, so. We're just starting that though. We just got our tanks this year and so next year you'll see us applying that too, so.
And then do we have the same for now that will come out in the winter months into the cleanup for like the, what we have for equipment for street sweeper?
Yeah, we gotta sweep first, that'll, if we, if, say, like right now, we got roads and stuff that we gotta get worked on, stuff like, but as soon as we're freed up, we get a guy in that sweep and start picking up sand.
I, I guess I don't really have anything. I was just wondering if there's something written that, that like it's covered?
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a question, Don.
Under.
What's the time limit on the, is there a time limit on that new road cut from A to A to Hilltop?
We planned on having that open by July, didn't we? I noticed it was out there, finally working on the head, the head, the head walls and the corridors and stuff, then the weather changed again, so. Hopefully by this July it'll be open. It should be open. It is planned to be open, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to know when.
When?
Because it's closer to come that way for me to get here.
It is, it is. Well, hopefully it's sooner than, than that, but weather dependent, so. Oh, yes, and we're gonna widen the turn lanes too, so.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and after we looked at them, after they was put down, it's like, yeah, that ain't gonna work, so.
Come out on the, the old A to A, it's kinda tight getting out on the road.
It is, it is.
Just a little bit of a budgetary constraint is why those turn lanes are the way they are. We didn't have enough funding to do everything that we'd like to do, so you're gonna see requests for A to A and Hilltop.
We might move into public comment, maybe.
That's a good idea.
If, if, if it's not an agenda item, I'm just saying, and then we could, we could circle back. So we're on correspondence reports and future agenda items. Do we have anything on that topic?
I really would like to see us do something on the library board. So I imagine before we put that on an agenda item, we probably need to do some research, like what the bylaws are or some other library boards, something like that. Um, I don't know if you want an agenda item for us to discuss all that, but then, then of course, we can go out and start advertising. But before we do that, I'd like to see some discussion on what it's gonna take to put together, what, what the board, what's expected of the board and, and that type of thing. So maybe put it on so we can take a look at it. Um, so what happened with, um, um, our, our Medex, uh, Med Air, um, is that going back on or did they answer us?
It will be on the next agenda. We did, uh, we did send them back a, um, item by item color coded to what the changes need to be and they responded. And their response, they made the two changes, which were the litigation and everything else was left exactly the same, so I think it's time to come back in front of the board and you guys can.
It's, it, yeah, exactly. We just need to bring it back and they don't have it done, then we just, I think we need to look at something different.
The other thing I'd like to see go on in Battle Mountain is like Elko and Wurumaka, they've got, uh, statues on the side of the road that, you know, monuments and stuff.
That, that's in progress right now.
It's in progress, yeah, that's what we're working on out there.
Well, what is these, what's the state putting in out here?
That's what we're.
I'm not a hundred percent, that, well, they're putting them in, but I'm not a hundred percent sure what the statutes are, or, you know, what they're gonna be, if they're cows, horses. Um, I think at one point, we did put in our request for what we wanted, but I can't recall exactly what they were.
We did and it was a couple of years ago and it was actually on the overpasses.
Yes, and that's where it's going.
And, and out, and, and what they decided, but it was all, it was all Nevada, you know, history and our rodeo and agriculture and wildlife and things like.
I can reach out and find out what exactly structures or what monuments are gonna go there if you'd like.
Yes, I'd like that.
Okay, anymore on correspondence reports, future agenda items? Okay, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only, is there public comment? Anybody? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
And Kathy seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries.
Muted.
You said aye, Brian?
This conference is no longer being.